Thank you. Well, I guess maybe we'll just get going and if somebody shows up late then we'll deal with that as we have to. So have everybody ready? Looks like it. Okay, excellent. So let's see. Time being 6:06, I called to order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is June 23, 2020. This is our regular meeting. And as the past few times, we are doing this remotely. So our webinar ID for tonight is 839-534-30682. If you want to log in and listen to us, or if you want to call in, one good phone number is +1-253-215-8782. Or you can watch us on YouTube, from what I understand. So that said, we're gonna, let's see, did I say everything? I think I did. Yes. Jen, would you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Grosscap.
Here.
Commissioner Schacter.
Here.
Commissioner Whissing. Commissioner Wussel. And then the alternates, alternate Commissioner West. Alternate Commissioner Kinkle.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item two tonight is the receipt of the minutes from the May 26 meeting. And I'm entertaining a motion to receive those minutes. Commissioner Grosscap.
Yes, Commissioner Dem, I have a suggested change and I gotta get it up here. Let's see.
Okay.
It's coming up. On page. It had to do with a vote where it was just missed. It was a typo. Anybody else see it? Oh, I'm sorry. It's just a typo where the motion was passed, but the motion was to approve. Let's see. Anna, do you have it? Because it's in there, the first item.
Could you remind us of the page, Catherine?
I think it's on page four. And it says, it was about action item one, Commissioners Grosscap, Shaver, Whissing, Sipperly, Dem. Oh, no, actually, it's accurate. I'm sorry. I read the word denied for all of them, but that's not right. So never mind. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to move to approve the minutes of, what was the date? May 26? 2020?
Second. Okay, a motion to approve the minutes as written and a second. Any more discussion on the minutes? No, we'll call for the question.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosscap.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. That was the minutes. And as always on the agenda, we have comments from citizens appearing for items that are not on the agenda. And looking at the attendees list, I don't know if anybody is here for that item. We usually have nobody, so this is your time to raise your hand. I don't see the hands going up, so we'll move on to item four on the agenda tonight. It is the continued item. Planning item 0420, consideration of a major site and architectural plan review rezoning from RH Residential, high-density to RT transitional and variance applications for the construction of 100 multifamily apartment unit in six buildings on approximately 5.8 acres. And like I said, this is a continued item, so we have heard most of it and I, I think we asked for some clarification last time. And Trent, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, Trent Hyatt with Community Development. And I'm just going to give you a quick background on where we've been thus far with the review of this application, as well as the additional information that we have received and provided for you in your packet. But as you remember, we first considered this application at the April 28, 2020 meeting, and that was continued to May 5 to allow for additional public comment on the matter. On May 5, we ran into some technical difficulties and that meeting was then continued to May 26. At the May 26 meeting, you did consider all four of the action items and decided to approve the variance related to the location of interior parking lots as it relates to intersections. You denied a variance request that requires the minimum of two housing types for this development. You did recommend approval to City Council of the related rezoning. And during consideration of the major site and architectural plan review application, which is action item four, the commission requested that staff and the applicant conduct a neighborhood meeting to discuss various options for access and circulation in the area surrounding the project site as it relates to the adjacent neighborhoods. And we quickly held that meeting on, last Monday on July 8. And as you remember, you actually continued the meeting at the May 26 meeting to July 28. However, the applicant has a need to move this application forward based on just timing and financing and development windows for them. So we actually renoticed the meeting for tonight, June 23, so that we could continue consideration. Your, your main direction for staff was to work with the neighborhood and the applicant to maybe try to understand some of the the impacts on the adjacent neighborhood as it relates to the proposal. And we had a meeting that was pretty well attended by approximately 25 citizens. And prior to that meeting, the applicant had really worked on a lot of the major concerns, both the traffic as well as site design and layout that you had addressed. And they, they came up with an option C, which is, we will show and discuss tonight, but we'll kind of refer to as option C. In addition to other options, as it regards to, to traffic in the area. But their option C addressed a lot of the issues. One, it did not extend the Palmer Avenue from 26th Street all down to Black Avenue and instead, kind of just confined the access to this specific development to the intersection of Blake Avenue and, and Palmer. And has separate driveways to each of the, the various buildings on either side of that street. However, they, they made the remainder of the right-of-way more of a bicycle and pedestrian path that would allow for fire and emergency access only. There were different discussions surrounding exactly what the, the traffic mitigation would be in the adjacent neighborhood. And many folks were in support of having a similar scenario to what was approved back in 2018 where you would have a one-way on Blake Avenue between 23rd and 26th Street. However, staff is not necessarily in support of that option because our concerns that it would place are an overburden on Palmer Avenue when traffic is backed up on Highway 2 or even from this development. Instead, he would like to see between 23rd and 26th Streets some speed bumps that would help to calm traffic in those areas as it relates to, to this development, as well as, you know, any potential overflow that those streets see during high-traffic volumes on 82. That proposal also included the removal of a building F that was concerning because of its proximity to the, the accursed townhomes to the east, as well as creates more of a central parking lot to those adjacent buildings and eliminates the access of a parking lot that was located at the northern portion of the lot and it's converted that actually to public open space. The applicant as well as is going to go over that briefly. However, I just didn't want to point out, and I'm sure you noticed that there were many additions to the attachments for your staff report. And we tried to date those based on the past meeting dates, as well as when we received them from the applicant so that it was clear you could see what new comments that we received. We included with that also notes from the special meeting that occurred on June 8. We were included a revised site plan that depicts option C, as well as elevations and landscaping plans for those associated buildings. We've included the new comments that we have received, as well as an application, or I'm sorry, a memo from, from the applicant that explains the, the changes that were made. Also included were, if you so choose to, to review those, some revised suggested findings and conditions from staff that would try to incorporate these, these amendments that were made. And I don't know if, if you'd like to take any, or if, I'll take some questions now if you have them, but also the applicant may like to give you a brief proposal and, and you may choose to jump into questions at that time as well.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Trent. And yeah, let's do, let's do questions from the commission to staff at this point. Raise your hand and we'll go in sequence here. We'll start with Sumner. Commissioner Schacter, please.
Thank you. First of all, I commend you all for moving this ahead quickly with pretty significant public input. Thank you. And extremely responsive action by the applicant. I have, do have a question. I don't know whether it'd be for Terry or Trent or both of you. I note that on the, Terry, the, the the improvements on South Blake are medium priority on the, on the new strategic plan. I think they were ranked seventh on our infrastructure plan. My concern and question, and actually be my concern would be to keep access to Blake anywhere from north of New Palmer, closed down until such time the city improves that South Blake section, section from 24th to 26th or 27th to whatever standards we decide, whether it's one-way, two-way, with, with gutter, with bike room for bike and pets in a safe manner. I'd be very reluctant to see it open without those improvements. So I just wonder how that fits into the picture.
And so we, we have some of the same concerns. You know, that was the reason why that condition was originally put on the, the proposal before this. You know, we were worried about the condition of the asphalt and we still are. And we, as a staff, Matt Langhorse and and Ryan and I met on in-sight to take a look at, you know, what we could do out there for a relatively low price. And I think we've come up with some, you know, obviously the pavement needs to be replaced, but some minor drainage improvements and new pavement that I think we could fit within that, that very small right-of-way there. The, the right-of-way actually, I think is 50 feet, but the, but you know, the section that we have is very small and we, I don't think we want to expand, you know, any closer to anybody's houses out there. So we do think that it's possible. And you know, you're right about the budget and the issues, you know, obviously the city's suffering financially and it, our next budget season will be, be a hard one. But you know, Matt and I intend to put a preliminary design to this and at least have a number for the council to consider for a rebuild of those streets in 2021. That said, you know, I guess, you know, if the planning commission felt strongly about it, we could try to just sign that as one way until that street could be improved. My, my concern over signing Blake as one-way southbound is that, you know, we do have, you know, occasionally we have traffic that comes off of State Highway 2 when it's congested and if they are, you know, headed up into that neighborhood and trying to get around any backups on State Highway 2, you know, a southbound condition at Blake funnels all the traffic up to Palmer. So, you know, I, in the, in the long run, I would really like to, to balance that and split traffic between the two and not focus traffic to just one spot. So that's a very long answer to the question.
So I understand that and I know I see the South Blake people had a petition. They prefer a one-way. I mean, if it were paved and, and safely allowing two-way and concerned with the kids and the cars, I don't have a problem with that, particularly if there's calming measures that are added. And you had mentioned those before. I'm wondering, given the fact that I suspect the applicant's going to take a while till they have a CO. And would you have any problem from a traffic point of view or an engineer point of view if until that road was improved to whatever standards your, the engineering department decides that that Blake gate remain closed and just move it north of the entrance to the development? That way they can get in and out for construction and until the road is safe and improved, there's no through-traffic. Once it's, once it's improved, the gate goes away.
I'm not sure about that because then we are setting, you know, we're directing traffic all the, you know, all and focusing all the traffic to the intersection of Blake and 27th instead of splitting it or Blake and State Highway 2, instead of splitting it between Blake and 27th. And I do believe that, you know, this project is probably going to happen, you know, over a period of time. But I would rather sign Blake at the entrance at 26th as as one-way. And, you know, instead of moving that gate around, that would be my preference if we were trying to protect the asphalt in the short term.
Well, I, I guess I'd support you. Any way you can keep through-traffic off Blake until such time it's improved. And that would be a way to do it. Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, thank you. And Commissioner Grosscap, please.
No, I think that conversation at the end was addressing a little bit my concern. I, I recognize the light challenge at 82 as you come down 27th from Blake, you got buses. I would be concerned if this development was active and the Blake gate was not open. So that, I think you answered that. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Yes, I wonder, what is the width of the right-of-way between 24th and 26th on Blake?
Jessica, do you know for sure? I think it's 50 feet.
Yeah, it's 50 feet.
Thank you.
It's a lot wider than people think it is.
And, and right now, the, the asphalt is what, 20 feet or?
It's a, it's between 18 and 20 feet. It's, it's very narrow.
Yeah. And some of the parking that people are using now on the east side of, of that street, I assume that right-of-way goes pretty much into their back, you know, their back stoop, if you will.
Yes.
I guess, you know, the previous approval was, from what I remember, was keeping Blake going one-way south and I know you all don't like that idea and I understand the concern about sending traffic to Palmer, but it just seems to me that that could be a much more, you know, it's sort of a nice little neighborhood there. And it seems like it could be a much more pleasant place with one-way traffic and access for pedestrians and cyclists than trying to turn that into a, a two-way street with sidewalks. And it seems to me it's going to change the neighborhood drastically and has the potential of bringing a lot more traffic further down Blake and into the rest of the town, which is as a former resident of that street, I would, you know, it's Blake's, right before I moved there, it was, there was one-lane bridge at 12th and it was, it changed that neighborhood dramatically. And I think this is the next step that is going to change that whole part of town in a negative sense. I would, I would love to see that stay as a one-way south as a part of this whole planning process, especially with the, the Blake gate going away, which to my mind is, you know, obviously has to be done to, to make this whole thing work.
Yeah. Um, you know, we, at one point, we wanted to have a conversation with the neighborhood to talk to both Palmer and Blake about alternatives. And we, we did have that conversation to some degree with a, with the developers to try to figure out, you know, what we could address with the development. And we were pretty narrowly focused on what the developers, the impact that the developers were having and what the developers could do to mitigate that impact. And, you know, we tried to keep away from the idea that the city, you know, would have a part of that conversation because we, we can't, we have to take our direction from the council and in the budget process, you know, the city council would have to make a decision about, you know, what funds were allocated or not. But, you know, I do think that it still may be worth a conversation with Blake, with Palmer. You know, there are some configurations of Blake. I got one up on my screen right now where we could have, you know, a one-way configuration, but again, it has the, you know, the, the one-way configurations in, in their preferred, you know, southbound direction really do, you know, send that traffic up to Palmer. So I feel like, you know, we have to have some compromise between the two neighborhoods to, to have, to agree on the, you know, the correct configuration because, you know, there are, and there are some, also some progressive ideas that have been tried, you know, in, in Europe mostly about single shared lanes. You know, where you have a bike path on both sides and only a, a single shared lane and cars meet head-to-head. And when you come to head-to-head, you move to one side and allow them to pass. You know, it's, it's a, it's an unusual configuration. We haven't tried it in our city yet, but it's an idea out there that we could, it's a striking idea. Actually, it would be very cheap to try. So there are lots of different ideas out there, I guess, to try to, to make this project palatable and, you know, keep the speeds down in those neighborhoods. And, and I, I don't mind the temporary one-way configuration, but I do think if we're going to have a permanent one-way configuration, I really would like to have input from the Palmer residents.
Well, and I, I could just add to that slightly. I, I did want to, I mean, of course, there's a lot of support for a one-way along Blake as, as outlined in the previous approval. But I certainly did hear from residents along Palmer who have concerns about that as well. You know, they are concerned about the additional traffic that would be directed to their street as well as, you know, the potential folks to do a lot of one-way movements, the opposite allowed direction. You know, if they're in the middle of a block or would want to get to a street faster.
Yeah, I, I certainly understand that. And it is a, an overall neighborhood issue, not just preserving two blocks on, on one street. But I, you know, I think the consideration needs to be for the entire neighborhood and the rest of the town as well. Now, I've heard the term speed bumps. Is that what's intended as opposed to mesas or tables or? My, my concern, I've never been over a speed bump that you could go over at any speed, including one greater than one, greater than zero, I guess, that was comfortable.
You know, I think there are two examples in the, in our city of, of speed bumps. And well, I guess the ones on Midland would be appropriately called speed tables. And I, I think that Councilman Davis always makes a point that he thinks that those are somewhat ineffective, that, you know, people drive over them quickly just to kind of experience the jump. And there is a second example, I think, out on the neighborhoods just to the south of the high school where they are so steep that if you go over them more than like 15 miles an hour, you're probably going to take a bumper off. And so those are two different examples that we could, you know, potentially place. But I think in the short term, you know, we do have some that are, that you can put down for a summer and then remove over the winter. And we might try those first, just for ease, you know, deployment and cost. And I know that, you know, from a maintenance standpoint, our, Matt's on the line, probably here somewhere. In a perfect world, they don't have to plow around those, those speed bumps, but they do out on the Polo neighborhood, south of the high school, and it's not the end of the world.
Well, I know as a, a resident of Midland that you can, if they're engineered right, you can go over a, a speed table at the prescribed speed and be comfortable. And if you exceed that, it's not so. But you know, I've never, never been a big fan of speed bumps per se. I can certainly understand the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, Commissioner Sipperly, please.
Thanks. And first, I'd like to commend the developers and the design team on the changes that have been made. It really feels like we're all working together to come to a good conclusion here. I would also, my, my really only major concern is the same as the rest of the commissioners is that two-way traffic on Blake Ave. I used to commute to the 27th Street bus stop and then the local doesn't go through. So I find myself walking up potholed Blake Avenue in the dark with cars and it, it, it's very difficult. If we do pursue having that, a two-direction street with a bike path and a sidewalk, would we not have to further encroach on these neighbors in order to take some of their property to expand to a right-of-way that would allow that? I mean, we're trying to mitigate impacts on the neighbors through this whole process. And then it seems like, it would be like, yeah, you can have that, but then we'll turn around and we'll take this. And I'm not sure I would feel comfortable with that. It seems also, unless I didn't read this correctly, that the developers are willing to play a part in converting Blake to one-way. So perhaps this would be a chance for the city to actually save some money and appease the neighbors. It's very clear from the public meeting and the petition that we received that the majority of neighbors who at least participated are not in favor of a two-way Blake. It also seems as though during the initial application from a couple of years ago, that was something that they were assured would happen was that Blake would be one-way. So I would just like to make sure that we address all the citizens' concerns and of course, the city's concerns too. But I do believe that our our citizens have been quite clear and that they would want to see Blake one-way. And frankly, as a user of it, I think that would be ideal. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, any other questions to staff at this point?
Yeah, I have one, Marco.
Hang on, Commissioner Shaver first.
Sure.
Regarding Blake One Way, I know it, I think that the previous approval was from twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, and I think the conversation now has been twenty-third to twenty-sixth. And I wonder if it wouldn't make, you know, I don't know that there's a lot of traffic that comes off of twenty-fourth going east. But there is some, and for them to only be able to go south on Blake at that intersection of twenty-fourth and Blake, it seems like the discussion should be one-way from twenty-fourth to twenty-six rather than from twenty-third to twenty-sixth.
We agree from an engineering standpoint, that closure, or that if we, if we do a one-way situation, it should be from twenty-fourth instead of twenty-third.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Schacter, please.
Another question to Terry. Did that, the Transportation Commission Vision Statement Draft, has that been adopted?
It hasn't yet. We intended it to to go last month, but had some issues. We are now planning to put it in front of the council. Not this next meeting, but the following meeting.
Well, my only observation, look at the draft form. Keeping Blake one-way or doing everything we can to minimize the impact of that neighborhood and additional traffic and encouraging more non-vehicular traffic seems extremely consistent with that new vision statement. That's all.
Yes, I I agree. And, you know, and the I agree with having Blake in a one-way configuration, at least as long as we have a poor asphalt condition out there. But I think that before we set Blake as a one-way southbound permanently, I think that we need to involve the neighborhood of Palmer. Because I really do believe that, you know, that condition will funnel more traffic to Palmer. And I want everybody to understand, and I guess if there's some way to have a compromise, I guess I'd like to have a compromise. I I don't want to, you know, have a decision where, you know, there's a lot of community anger over over this decision.
What sounds like, based on what you've said, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you've got at least a year, maybe even two years to deal with that. Is that correct? Based on, based on city budget priorities and the completion of this project?
At least a year and maybe two, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you all. Any other questions? Okay, I got just a short one. I read in one of the, probably goes to any of the staff. It I read somewhere in the comments, and I want to know the validity to that, that maybe in the past, at some point, it was said that this Blake Gate will never open. Is that written somewhere? Does anybody know?
Jen, can you recall her, Jessica? There was a council discussion about that at one point in time. There was, at some point, one of the residents said that they were assured by a member from the city. I don't know exactly if they specified who, when they installed the Blake Gate, that it would be there forever. But as far as I know, nothing's ever been documented or recorded or anything.
And of course, that was quite some years ago.
When Walmart was done.
Okay, that was a few years ago, right? So so we have nothing in writing that says we cannot touch that gate.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's okay. That's good. And the other thing is, Terry, are you at all concerned that now that with this, with this new proposal, the the change, the slightly changed proposal, updated, I should say, that we're not getting a full Palmer Avenue? That if any of this traffic is not working out like we hope it would, that somebody has to pay for a Palmer Avenue at some point if we need to go a different route?
You know, we did have a discussion internally about, you know, compromise essentially. And because I think that the developer, you know, has the option of going forward with the proposal that was approved last year. And that does show a two-way, two-way configuration of Palmer and a connection into twenty-sixth. You know, with their newest proposal, we liked the layout better. We felt like it addressed the community concerns, you know, better. We felt like we met the conditions of keeping it for public use by having the the emergency access on it and the pedestrian access on it. But it is, it is a compromise. And yes, if there is a time in the future where we would want to connect Palmer, I believe that that would have to be a future developer's cost or the city cost. But I would say that, you know, we are pretty much at buildout on that side of the of town. And there is no, we have oh, a plan that was developed with CDAD, a quarter optimization plan that labels, you know, routes and bridges and things that should be built in the future to improve our city circulation. And Palmer is not on that list. So the only time that I think that we may want to have that connection is if, you know, property values skyrocketed and we had, you know, some sale and development of those two lots that are, you know, to the east of this project. But I would say that the property values would have to become astronomical to have that be a reality. So I think that this is a reasonable compromise to take, and I don't foresee, you know, any any need to have a full connection there, a full vehicular connection, you know, in the next ten years.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Pretty information. Okay, great. If I see no more questions, then I would like to welcome back our applicants. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being patient with us and and thank you for putting your best foot forward and being part of the meeting that you guys had last week. I would say it was a success. I'm I'm glad it all worked out. So that said, would you like to present what you came up with, the update and all that stuff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Michael O'Connor with Triumph Development, and I'm going to share my screen here.
Thank you.
And and thank you for the comments and the questions. You know, certainly a lot of work has gone into this. We've, we've had a very productive four weeks and we're here tonight rather than in July, you know, based on some schedule constraints that we have. So I'll address those at the end of the presentation. But a- as far as our team that's here tonight, obviously, myself, starting off this presentation, so we're the owners, rep and co-sponsor of the project. Stephanie Copeland from Four Points Funding is here as well. My partner, Mike Foster, we'll be talking about some of the design changes quickly. And then we have both Representative Derek Walter and Greg Schroeder to here to answer any civil or traffic questions that you may have. You know, a lot of work has gone into getting to this point. And I just wanted to say thank you first to staff who worked really diligently with us and and provided a lot of focus and guidance on the process that we needed to follow in order to be here tonight. And then the community meeting, you know, we definitely did our homework in getting ready for that, but it was a, it was a very productive conversation and and, you know, even though I approached it with some trepidation, it was very successful. And so I wanted to say thank you for a constructive conversation about that. We took your feedback to heart. I mean, I think Commissioner Schacter, your, 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 your direction to us was think outside the box. And that 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 kind of direction and creativity is what led to this modified plan we have tonight. And it's, it's one we're proud of. And I think the the plan is better for it. And it was your pressure that ultimately led to it. And the process, I would say, has worked the way it should. The the presentation we have tonight really just focuses on the changes to the prior plans. We're happy to address any other questions you may have specifically. And I'm going to try and keep this fairly brief, but still cover our bases. You know, the coming out of the prior meeting, we took careful notes and identified a list of things that were a complete list of questions that we needed to answer for the commissioners and as well as some of the public comment we heard as well. First and foremost was the traffic management plan. And really, that that fell into two categories. The first one was the impacts from the development on the neighborhood, which I think our engineering showed is rather minimal, but we we've striven to address that. But then what to do with the tree through traffic that this this development could open up? The location of Building F and the other development impacts on the Oakers Townhomes, that was another area that we needed to focus. You know, creating some more community, you open space and usable space, a bike and pedestrian friendly design. We needed to add an additional housing type to meet the zoning requirements. So we've taken care of that. The debris flow fence that was in the current plan, maintaining that and that additional protection. Some questions about the rental office, community amenity locations within the project. On-site property management and the leasing guidelines to control cars, we talked about briefly, but we can address again tonight. And then understanding the resources required for the offsite improvements that we are proposing. And then finally, some parking totals. Starting with the revised traffic management plan, I think most of you all understand the what, where we ended up. But I wanted to give you some color on how that process unfolded. We in our engineering team brainstormed several different options and ultimately settled in on seven different potential options and really zeroed in on what the realistic ones that would have staff support were and and came up with four options that we present, were presented to the community. The first one was the current entitlements that are in place. You know, we, we have taken that as a fundamental component of our application. You know, if I had the streets from, you know, I say twenty-third to twenty-six, if twenty-fourth to twenty-six is the more appropriate one, of course, that's fine. The next was several different options, it's steam calming techniques on on Palmer at a minimum. And and we spent some time talking about the merits of both speed bumps or speed humps or dips and several different things. And Terry had covered that, I think, pretty well for us. You know, I studied some ideas about one-way, a coupled one-way street configuration with a Palmer southbound or Blake southbound, Palmer northbound, and creating a striped, you know, pedestrian and bike path. And then finally, option C, which was the redesign of the Palmer Avenue right-of-way, which we've spent some time talking about. And and so, you know, moving on to what some of those represented, you know, this was the old site plan, you all are familiar with, the Blake continuing through the site. But the option C, you know, really took the right-of-way and turned it into, you know, it preserves the existing use of the way the neighborhood uses it, even though it's unimproved, right? There's pedestrian and I guess bike access through there. Utilities are still carried through there. And in a pinch today, would serve as a means of emergency access, but we would certainly enhance that and improve that. The right-of-way that we would need to improve to a typical city street would just be the section that serves our parking lots, so really this first kind of quarter of the site and all of the and and all of our traffic for our parking lots would be directed towards this, this southern portion of the site and the Blake and Palmer intersection. You know, I think that the the potential benefits, I mean, it it goes without saying, but, you know, there's, there's a number of benefits for it. And I think it's, this change was what got so much enthusiastic support from the people who participated in the community meeting. So in summary, what we've included in our application, you know, we, we can, what I'd like to propose to you is we can control the things that we're proposing tonight. I I agree with Terry. If if a community meeting is the way to address what the future configuration should be, I completely support that. But what I'd like to make a condition of this, this application are the things that we can control and are proposing for the benefit of the neighborhood as in conjunction with our development. You know, this is a quick visual representation of what the current entitlements have. It's, you know, it's a one-way, it's one-way Blake, southbound. And and we needed to provide some improvements to the intersection and signage that would facilitate that one-way configuration. And I think the engineers call this an elephant ear that creates an island that that stops any northbound traffic, recognizing that this is not, this is not a through street. And with the results of the community meeting and really focusing on the the ideas that had the most support, we've augmented that the current proposals with what I think is a very meaningful change. And what we are proposing is what we heard the most support from for the community. And I understand Terry's, you know, her, her position and her perspective on these things. But, you know, as a component of our application, we outlined them in the June seventeenth memo, that's a component of your packet, but it's basically many of the things that you commissioners have talked about. It's preserving Blake as a one-way southbound, adding some speed control measures, namely speed bumps on Palmer. I believe Matt thought a grouping of two on this section of road from twenty-third to twenty-six, a section of two different speed bumps would be adequate and appropriate. And then then the redesign of Palmer through the site. And and for each of these things that we are proposing, the applicant would be paying for those, with those items. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Foster and let him take you through some of the design modifications, what I think are substantial and real beneficial.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike. Good evening, everybody, and thank you again for your time this evening. As Mike said, we spent a lot of time, we really did take your comments to heart. And this is the plan that I believe is the result of a good community effort to to make this blend with the with the community as it sits today. On the plan right there is that that was where we were last time. If we go to slide number sixteen, the very next one, we can start to show the significant changes we made. The first one was Building F. If you can remember, Building F was tucked right next to the Oakers Townhomes, and we've deleted that building. So now we've got five apartment buildings with a total of ninety-eight units within those, those units, within those buildings. Building A got a little bit larger, which is down close to the Blake and Palmer intersection. Building B next to it actually got a little bit smaller. What we did there is we took the top, top floor off of that building. So it went from twelve units down to ten. Building C behind it stayed exactly the same. Building D, which is tucked there in the middle, is now seventeen units, and that's where our community building, our community room, sorry, is housed. And then the building E to its left or to the north is a new, slightly larger building than what was there before. So in these five buildings, we get our ninety-eight units. And then the, the new, the new building or the new add to this, to this application is the the two-family structure right there that Mike's pointing to on this, on the screen. So that that's two, two-bedroom, two-bath units with a one-car garage that would all be accessed off of that main parking parking area. With that said, we extended that parking area from where it stopped, basically on the about where his cursor is today, and we extended it to the left or to the north. By doing that, we were able to completely eliminate the north parking lot. I know that there was some concerns about from Oak, Oakhurst Townhomes and even the spec residents on the, on the uphill side or on the east side of of Palmer Avenue that they did not like the configuration or the placement of of that. that they did not like the configuration or the placement of, of that parking. So once that parking was eliminated and within that circle that you see there on, on the screen, that, that's about 16,000 square feet. So it's a, it's a little bit over a third of an acre that we're designating towards a, a, a public amenity, a public park. It still has quite a bit of topography to it. So as we excavate and did for our foundations, uh, we're going to be unearthing quite a few boulders. And those boulders then will be used to, to level it out and create different recreation areas and picnic areas and some real usable space, not only for our residents, but we're viewing this as usable space for the entire neighborhood. So I think that's, that's a great, a, a great amenity, a great add for the neighborhood along with, with our residents as well. It gives them a place to go and, and throw a football or, or, or a dog park or walk your dog or even have a picnic in the evening. So those are, those are really the highlights of, of what we changed as far as site plan. Mike, as we continue down, uh, let's go into number 19, slide number 19, if you can pick that one, please. So as that, that north parking lot, I'm sorry, that central parking lot extends to the north, it extends down to about unit number seven or eight, if you count from 26th into the, the property. It goes down to about between, uh, townhomes number seven and eight. And, and then as you can see here, we, we've tried to enhance the landscaping to create a natural barrier. There'll be somewhere between two feet and four feet of, of retaining wall or grade change between our parking and the, the finished grade there that takes you into the Oakhurst Townhomes. So on the uphill side of that, of that retaining, uh, we are proposing a 48-inch tall wood fence that would create an additional barrier. So as a car was pulling in at, at the evening time and the headlights would not shine into a, a bedroom or a different use in the Oakhurst Townhomes. We think between the, the fence and the landscaping, uh, that we've been able to control that or, or stop any light pollution, uh, coming off of our site into our neighbor's location. Number 20, Mike, the next one down. Again, here I wanted to talk about the, 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 the two-family residence. It's a two-story residence on the ground level. You'll have an entry, a bedroom, one-car garage for each unit. Go upstairs where you'll find a living kitchen area, a second bedroom and a, and a second bathroom. So we think that these are very comparable to the existing townhomes that are in the neighborhood and think it's a nice complimentary use with our apartments and our multifamily structures that we have. 21, Mike. So a, as we talked about, and Mike talked about this briefly, on the right-hand side or on the south side, Palmer Avenue from Blake Avenue, uh, up to where the arrow points in. And we have our four points of access into our parkings, our parking lots. That will be paved 24 feet wide with our curb and, and gutter. And, and then our accesses into our parking lots themselves. Then between that location and going all the way over to almost, uh, 26th Street, that's going to be a 10-foot wide paved, um, bike path, emergency lane, a couple of different uses there. And then with the, with the emergency access or the fire truck access, uh, there's going to need to be structural shoulders. So on both the uphill side, the east and the downhill side, the west, we're proposing to have five-foot wide structural shoulders. And, and I'm saying structural right now because we're still working with the fire department on exactly what that is. Is that structural grass pavers? Is, is that a, is that a gravel? Is that a paved? Still working out those details and, uh, but right now it's showing 10-foot wide with five-foot shoulder, five-foot shoulder. So we have a 20-foot, 20-foot wide, uh, structural area for the fire truck. Uh, up on those areas, we also have fire truck staging for buildings D and E so that they have complete access all the way around our buildings. And then within our main parking lot, we have the, the hammerhead or the fire truck turnaround that's placed between building E and our new, uh, single-family, uh, structures. Mike, go down to number 22, please. There we go. Uh, so over on building B, I mentioned this quickly, to, to keep our units at the 100, which is allowed, by, by increasing building A, increasing building E, uh, it took us to 100 units. But with the, with the two single-family or the two-family residents, uh, put us at 102. So we needed to, to back off two units. The way I was able to achieve this is building B, which the red arrow is pointing to. Uh, all of our structures are our larger apartment buildings right now are three stories on the downhill side, three stories on the uphill side. Building B, we're actually going to delete the two-story or the two units on the uphill side. So it's, it's still a three-story, uh, building or, or facade on the downhill, but only a two-story facade on the uphill. So I, I, I think that's still in very good character with the other buildings. And it just helps me keep my unit count, uh, to the 98 plus the two, giving us 100 total. Number 23, Mike. So we, we still have a, a leasing office, uh, it's in building A, uh, close there to Blake and Palmer. Uh, next to that, we'll have our fire command room. So if we do have an issue, that's where the fire, the fire would, uh, we, uh, access first. And then that would tell them where, where the issue was occurring. Uh, we have one of our amenities right there tucked into is we have a, a little bike tuning room. So that's what that arrow is pointing to. Then the upper arrow goes up to building D and that is our community room. So that's about a 630-square-foot community room. And then it has a little outdoor space, a little pergola there. Uh, and we've introduced, uh, some, some doorways that will allow that indoor use and outdoor use to, to flow. So on a night like tonight, we could open that up and, and, um, whenever COVID is behind us, we can enter, uh, we can have our, our residents entertain and, and have a small little gathering there. So that, I think that addresses the, the amenities. Last thing I wanted to touch on quickly is slide number 24, Mike. There was still some talk about the debris fence and that's uphill or to the east. We are still proposing that, that debris fence has not changed. So I believe it's about 450 feet in length. It's still structured to, to do the, the retaining, the uphill material that we've talked about. Not only giving our property, um, some, some assurance and securities of, of what may come down the road, but also we think that this is a, a benefit for, uh, the, the downhill, the Oakhurst Townhomes and even some of the residents north of 26th Street. Just above the parking, uh, just above the park there, you'll see we've introduced a, a small little berm there to help direct some of the, the, the runoff or the water as well to take that down 26th and not through the park into the Oakhurst Townhomes. So I think that briefly shows you the, the changes in a very high level that we've been able to work out. Again, I, I, you know, I want to thank the, the staff for working with us and then our design team. I, I think, uh, altogether, we've worked together and come up with a, a pretty good plan that addresses the comments that we heard, um, a month ago.
Thanks, Mike. So moving on with some things that we've talked about at a high level in the past, but I'll just echo again this evening to make it official for the record. You know, the, the, well, I guess first parking and parking counts. This, this latest plan is up, is up to 151 units, which is 15 more parking spaces than is required by code. You know, it's a, that's an 11% in excess of code. And, and, and it's a, it's a count that we're very comfortable with, um, and, and reflective of other managed apartment communities that are closed with, with close proximity to transit. So, um, we, we, we believe we're not only meeting code, but have a functional plan too. And then property management, um, you know, we, we, we have an onsite property management office that is there to control parking and trespassing and, and really any management or neighborhood concerns. We will have a property manager living onsite. And, and we, we, we plan to manage the community where parking will be controlled, you know, what manner that parking will be controlled via leases. You know, leases will specify the number of cars and residents for each unit. We, we will assign parking spaces, have parking passes. And, and there, there's management tools such as even charging for parking, excess parking, that, that we can implement to, uh, encourage households that, um, that have fewer cars. And it, and, and then again, that parking, that manager, onsite manager will be in charge of policing parking, not only for our residents, but for any poachers that are going to be, um, you know, so it's an issue that has to be managed. Finally, uh, kind of a recap of the, um, the, the, the comments that we heard and how they've all been addressed. We've talked about traffic quite a bit this evening, and I think we've heard from you all what your, what your motivations are. You know, but by moving building F, by eliminating that north parking lot and the retaining walls associated with it, I think there's much significant, the, the, the impacts on the Oakhurst Townhomes have come down significantly. Uh, we, we have substantially more community open space with that park, which was something that we were challenged to find in, in our prior conversation. Uh, a bike and pedestrian friendly design was, was, was something that we were challenged to find. And I think the, the use of that right of way, I mean, it was this instruction that really was the brainstorming around. Is there a different way for the right of way? The additional of, 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 the addition of another housing type to meet the zoning requirements has been addressed. The debris flow fence is, is maintained in the current plan. I think the logistics of the rental office being near the front of the community makes sense, but we have that community room that is central to the overall project. Um, and then property management and leasing guidelines. And, and the applicant's commitment to funding the offsite traffic improvements. I think there might be one more. Um, oh yeah, and then parking accounts that exceed code. So quickly in summary, um, how do, how do we stack up with what's required by, by the zoning? And how do we stack up against the current plan? You know, we, we, I'd like to remind everyone that we have added 2710 Blake into the plan. So we are dealing with a larger parcel than, um, the, the current, the prior entitlements. We have the 100 units that are permitted by code. As far as the unit mix is concerned, I think we have a much better mix of uses than the currently approved plan and have added that duplex unit type in. As, as far as the overall size of the community, we're, we're only three more bedrooms than the current plan. And 2710 Blake has three units on it today. So, you know, we, we are of, of, of a much similar overall scale to the currently approved plan. I just think a, a much better site plan. Setbook setbacks and heights, those have all been addressed as, and, and meet the requirements of the zone. Lot coverage, we are substantially under what's allowed and, and landscape area, we're substantially in excess of what's required. And then finally, um, the, the proposed parking meets the code and the, the zoning variances have all been addressed. And it's, we have just one, rather than five variances, but before, we now have one variance that has already been approved. You know, it was, it, it was your direction to figure out the traffic situation that was, um, you know, kind of the catalyst for all of this. But at the end of the day, I think we have a site plan that we are, um, we are all much happier with and, uh, and have, uh, community support for from everything that we have heard. I, now, at the beginning of the presentation, I said, um, we, we have some schedule commitments. And, you know, we're, we're here, you know, but, but frankly, with this sense of urgency that, um, that, that's ticking away. And, and I just want to explain a little bit of that to you. So our partner in this project, Four Points, is an opportunities own investment fund. And there is a clock that is ticking where they need to deploy the capital that they have allocated for this project. There's only 24 months left on that clock. So, you know, that, that really drove the need to, to, to meet, um, in June rather than July. And, and at the same time, the current entitlements that are there are set to expire early in 2021. You know, there's, there's an awful lot of civil engineering and architectural design and things that need to happen in addition to, you know, finalizing any financing. And, and that stuff just takes months. So we're, we're at a crossroads now. And, um, you know, I, I don't mean it as the, any kind of pressure or, or threat, but I just wanted to make, make you understand the practical reality of the sense of urgency that we have. You know, the, the, what you guys have challenged us with has, has ended up with a better project. This is, this is, I believe substantially better than the currently approved plan. But, but, but we are at a crossroads tonight. And so with that in mind, I just wanted to say thank you again to everyone. We, we, we appreciate the feedback. Things are better for it and we look forward to hearing your comments and hopefully your support for the project. But we're asking for a vote tonight. Happy to answer, answer any questions and, uh, that's all we have. Stephanie wants to say something.
Please go ahead.
No, I'm great. I think Mike, Michael covered it all. And just, uh, again, we're, we're, we're just really pleased as to where we are with the project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for, uh, for this explanation and, and very thorough explanation and, and very nice site plan. So I, anyway, uh, back to the commission, um, two, uh, questions to the applicant at this point. And let's see, I gotta go over here. Um, we're going to start with Commissioner Grosskopf, please.
Okay. Hopefully I'm unmuted. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation from city staff and also the applicant. Really pleased to just see the amount of work done in such a short amount of time. I really commend you all. Just a couple, it's more like clarifying, I think. So the large parking lot that's now been created, um, I don't know if we saw the total number of spaces. It might've been in that chart, but just, do you all have any thoughts about the amount of circulation that has to go in and out of that single access? You know, if I'm in any of those two buildings, including A, I guess there wasn't access to the upper levels from the larger parking lot. You know, what do you guys anticipate that's going to feel like driving in and out of there? Is it going to be manageable? You know, I'm thinking you're probably going to say yes, but I'm just wanting to point out the complexities of maybe some of those, you know, dealing with that, with cars going all the way down to those townhomes and then coming back through.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, um, I, I think it's certainly manageable. I mean, the, when, when you're talking about, um, I, I, Greg could remind me what the peak hour, uh, traffic volumes are. But, you know, we're, it's not a queue of cars. I mean, it's, there's, Greg, feel free to jump in and, and share what, what the actual peak hours are. But, you know, when you're talking about dividing, um, you know, all of it funneling into one intersection, it's not like it was a massive volume of cars. So I, I, I do think this is, this is sufficient. There's, there's plenty of communities that just have, of, of this size that have one entrance into, into more units.
Commissioner Grosskopf, there's 151 spaces. Two of them are part of the townhomes, the duplexes, so 149 in the parking lots.
Yeah, no, you, you're correct. And in that main parking lot there that we're talking about, there's 87 total.
Okay. Um, and then the park is still part of the development. I read in the suggested conditions, um, provided by staff that it was labeled public park. But I just wanted to sort of clarify, this is maintained and part of the proposed application.
Right.
Yes, it is. And, and our intention is that to be a community park, though.
Awesome. Um, and then, did you describe, Michael, what the surface of the path would be? I think you said a hard surface. Is that true asphalt?
Yeah, it asphalt, it would be a 10-foot asphalt path. And then whether it's, you know, grass keep, green pavers or, um, some other form of shoulder that's acceptable, um, we're still working on.
And I think the last question I have, and maybe this ends up back at staff, but what I hear you describing is a plan that the commission here would vote on that includes one-way on Blake. But I heard staff suggested different, you know, two ways on Blake. So, um, if it comes down to a proposed vote, do we need to clarify that? Maybe that is for Trent or maybe Michael. I think what you said very clearly was that your proposal here is one-way with the, the elephant ear thing so that people don't, you know, it's a one-way on Blake. So I guess I've used on that still.
You know, the, the way I've, um, what we are proposing is exactly what we have proposed. So, um, and, and those are improvements that we would, are committed to making. What, what I think I heard Terry say, and she can certainly speak for herself, is she would like to, um, focus on what a future better condition could look like. And I'm in favor of that. And if that changes our, what, what we have improved, that's fine. But, but, but I, what I'd like to get to tonight is this is what we are approving as a commission, knowing that there may be a future conversation that happens that, that looks to build some additional consensus and, and to get additional street improvements in there. That comes in and supersedes what we have done, even while we're under construction, that's fine. And if it happens a year after we're done, that's fine. But, but, but really be in a position to move forward with a, a plan that is functional and works and, and, and it takes into account the, the neighbor's concerns. And, um, if, if, if the city staff wants to then take that next step, uh, I, I, I would, I encourage it.
So Catherine, this is what I would suggest. You know, I I understand the Blake residents concerned about the condition of the asphalt. I guess I think a reasonable compromise might be to say that we'll have a you know, signage that that indicates that Blaze Blake is now one way southbound instead of a, you know, an actual median construction out there. And then, you know, move forward with a few things. One, you know, maybe having a larger conversation with Blake and Palmer residents about the final configuration of both the roads. And then also, secondly, you know, going through the city's budget process to see if we could get some sort of a reconstruction funded in twenty twenty one. But I think in, you know, for tonight and for, you know, the approval of this project, I guess I would I guess suggest that the planning commission consider, you know, signage that would indicate that Blake is, you know, one way southbound instead of two way so that we minimize the damage or the increased damage to the already poor condition of that road.
Thank you so much, and I think ultimately the conversation about one way or two way awaits when the actual development in the Blake Gate opens for public use, so there is that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Thank you. On the, I've just got a clarif- quick clarification question on one item on the site plan, on the one I printed out. The area just to the east of the proposed park area is sort of an oval sort of thing, and it was crosshatched on this one drawing. What what does that represent exactly?
I I believe what that is is some additional debris flow protection, so there's some buring there that if if any water was coming downhill from through the debris flow fence, it can be deflected over towards twenty six and then flow down that road. So, you know, protecting the park and protecting Oakhurst to west.
Okay. And then I guess this this path, former, the Palmer path, if you will, portion of the development that that would have to be maintained during the winter with snow, uh, snow removal for fire and emergency access.
Yes, it would. And I I but that we've got that addressed as a condition, but it's something we were committed to.
And and what, how do you handle, are you wanting to store snow on site or where do you, what do you do with the snow?
And I think it's gonna have to be a managed situation. We've got quite a few spots. Mike, you might be able to talk about quantities a little bit more, but why don't you talk about snow storage?
Yeah, we we do. Within our site, we've got different designated areas, and I I apologize, I don't have a slide for that tonight. Where we've designated as snow stacking areas so that whenever, whenever in the winter or the different months that we can maintain that, we can control that and keep not only that access open, but all the accesses for our parking lots. So all that will be stored and and stacked within our property.
And and not taking up parking spots in the process?
No, right, right now I've got it all designated, so all one hundred and fifty one of our spots stay open year round.
Great. And I guess maybe a question for Trent or or the applicant. You make reference to coordinating with the fire department. I'm assuming fire and emergency people are totally on board with this scenario?
Yes, we would want to definitely meet with them on a final design. But their main concern would be grade and width, which we have discussed, but they would certainly need to sign off on the final.
But in general, they're they're approving this.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go to the next commissioner, Jen, did you have some input?
I just wanted to clarify, Commissioner Grosskopf asked a question about the the difference between what the developer is proposing and what staff had prepared in terms of conditions related to the two way. And I think that in general, the preferences for connectivity. And so I think I just wanted to answer the question related to the the difference. And just to clarify, if you are making a condition, if you get to that point, whether or not that is a temporary condition, that's what I'm hearing you say, but I just would like to, if you're gonna to to be clear in your conditions, if you're going to to add one related to the signage and the one way piece on Lake, potentially, and and until such time, there's, we're able to have a community conversation with the neighborhood to work through design. We've done similar kind of design work with the Red Mountain neighborhood, for instance.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Schacter.
Yeah, I don't know how good my connection is, but I just wanted to follow up. I think what Jen just said, when what Catherine said is my, it would be my understanding. And I don't the developer isn't responsible for per se, that if we do a condition or an understanding that the Blake would be made and signed and one way either prior to or concurrent with the gate opening, with the understanding that it's a temporary solution, time, public meetings and city engineering come to a final decision about the outcome of that twenty fourth to twenty sixth. I don't know if you guys can hear me or anything. Am I frozen out? Better pass it on, Chairman.
Okay.
Go ahead and proceed, yeah.
I I could hear you just fine if you want to continue.
Oh, well, that's basically, I mean, I don't know if you heard the link. That's basically what I said, the understanding that again, that concurrent or prior to opening the gate, Blake would become one way by signage and with the understanding that it's temporary until such time. And the community engineering department come up with a final outcome for for Blake. The only other, we had mentioned at some point, an elephant ear in addition to signage, Terry. Arch, is that an option or signage sufficient?
You know, if it were gonna be a permanent condition, I would advocate for the elephant ear because, you know, it would be just a step up from a sign. But I still believe that we should have a community conversation before we decide that that's the permanent configuration of Blake.
Sorry.
Did you hear that, Summer?
No, but I think I understand if when it becomes permanent, if it becomes permanent one way, then an elephant ear. I'm kind of frozen out, so just go ahead. I'm I'm fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. All good. Okay, any any other questions to the applicant at this point? Now we'll see none. Great. Thank you very much. I have a, I have a quick, just a clarification. I think it probably goes to staff more than anything. It's, I have two questions. If we're inclined to approve this tonight, the way it sits in front of us with all these options and previous owners and and approved proposals and all that kind of stuff, sitting somewhere out there. If we're inclined to approve this tonight, is this what we're getting? What I'm looking at on this side plan, Trent, is is this what we're getting? This is what's gonna be built?
I I think technically, until the applicant's vested right for the previous approval was expired in January of next year. I think that they would have the option for both. However, I don't think that they would be going to the amount of detail tonight unless they had clear intentions of developing this proposal.
Would you think, okay, can we, can we condition anything saying that this is it?
I I don't really know that you can vacate their previous approved entitlement, but that may be a question for for Anna.
Right. Anna, chime in if you'd like, please. And the the other thing is oh, what was it? It was this and then obviously the the gate, and I've been told now many times that the gate will go away. So I just want to make sure that that's really gonna go away, because I think that's crucial to this entire development, so.
I think every, at least every consideration that we've looked at in terms of this development include Blake Gate going away.
Great, thank you. Okay, excellent. Anna, did you have anything on the on the prior approval and all that?
I guess I I'm not sure what you're thinking of, what your question is. So like approve this with the condition that the prior approval will be superseded by this?
Yes.
But then, even if you approve it with that condition, I think they can still decide to pursue the other one. I don't think that that does it. Like, if you say, okay, we approve this on the condition that
This is all you can build. This is it. I want this.
I mean, unless they voluntarily make the statement now that they will withdraw it, I don't think, no.
No, no.
I mean.
Marco, this is certainly our intention to build. And, you know, at least my understanding is it's the city council's ultimate decision, but I mean, we're we're we we will be taking this forward to the city council, and we've spent months working at an improved plan. You know, subject to them saying yes, this is
And I know you have, and 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 what you come back with is is fantastic. It's it's such a vast improvement. But I want to make sure we're really getting this. This is, this is all I'm coming down to is this, we've, we've waited, you've waited, you've worked very hard. This is what we, this is it, right? Right, Stephanie?
That's right. Marco, the the whole reason we've invested the architectural and legal and and civil, all the design team investment was because we also believe this is much better. So
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, this is what we would be building if we were to get approval. We otherwise would have, I don't mean to be flippant about this at all, we would have just reverted to the current approval already, but I I appreciate the question.
Right, I just want to make sure. This day and age, you have, you just don't know. Until it's on paper and there's signatures, you just don't know. So I just want to make sure, and I don't know if there is a way, and and if if yes, I guess you guys just said that this is what you're building, so Anna, well, that that's in the record now, right?
There, there, I know that there's a condition that they will comply with their statements made at the public hearing, whether, like Trent said, that is a valid, you know, waiver of their private right. I I'm not, I'm not positive.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Let's say this is in front of us and this is what we're what we're voting on. So, excellent. So any other, I saw, I saw Summoner's hand go up briefly. Summoner, are you good? Commissioner Schacter?
Good, that's, that's what I was going to mention, exactly what happened. If the applicant states it on the record. Finding condition, as I understand it, and I'm satisfied if you are, Commissioner.
Yeah, I think I'm fine. I think I'm fine. It's on the record, so and then council's gonna hear it too, and and I think it'll be fine. Excellent. So, um, let's see, since we were in the process of going through the motions last month, and we knocked out, I think, two of them or maybe three, this is our last one. We will not be taking any additional public comment tonight. This is a, an update that came out of the public meeting that you guys all had, which seems very, very successful, and I'm glad it happened. So I will bring it to the commission at this point for a motion in action item number four for planning item oh four twenty to allow for the construction of a hundred unit multifamily apartment unit, units, sorry, in six buildings. And there's a whole bunch of findings and conditions, so. And Commissioner Schacter?
Oh, I would
Oh, no. You just, you're in and out. I cannot
You know, but maybe you better have somebody else. Well, I have one condition I would change. Can you hear me now or not?
Hear you fine, yes.
Let's try it. If you can't, go to somebody else. I I would move to recommend city council approve the major site architectural plan review application for the construction of a hundred multifamily and duplex unit as amended in option C with the findings and conditions outlined on pages one and two of the June twenty third, twenty twenty revised suggested motions included of staff report with one modification that on condition of approval number one that that Blake from twenty fourth to twenty six be made temporarily one way south until such time the city with community input and the engineering department come up with a more permanent solution.
Okay, and that, okay, that will go at the end of this condition somewhere in there.
Well, or you could add it to condition at the end of condition one.
Okay, we'll just add it. Okay, that sounds good. I think we understand. Okay, we have a a motion to approve with a altered condition number one.
I will second that motion with the altered condition number.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ziperly, I see George's hand is up. Commissioner Shaver?
Yeah, I guess the findings and conditions as listed by the staff. Pages one and two, is that part of the motion?
Yes. With the, with the
Yeah, and I I had raised my hand to a second, so.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the site architectural plan review? Or did we discuss this enough? No, no hand, no discussion? Excellent. Then I will call for the question. At this point, it's to approve action item number four.
Commissioner Grosskopf.
Approve.
Commissioner Shaver?
Uh, approve emphatically.
Commissioner Ziperly?
Also approve, yes.
Commissioner Schacter?
I'm getting locked out. Sorry.
You're here.
Can you hear me? Did anybody call my name? I approve.
Commissioner Dem?
Yes.
Motion, uh, motion approved. I'm sorry about that.
Excellent. Very nice. Thank you very much. So again, I I'm not sure how to say this correctly, but a a lot of times when we spend a little bit more extra time on on something like this, we do get a more favorable product, and and you guys have definitely stepped up to the plate. This, this is so much better, and and I'm I'm really looking forward to to receiving this into Glenwood Springs. This is, this is great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We're so grateful. Thank you very much.
Thanks to everyone. Thank you. Okay, that was that. George, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to commend all involved, the community, the developer, the staff. Sumner and his input in particular from the 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 commission. And I would hope that this developer would come back in the future. I think that would really be a valuable asset to our community to have, have you coming back to us sometime in the future, if you so choose to do so.
That's our, that's our plan, is to keep moving money into these communities the way you guys want it, so we really appreciate this.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay, thanks to all. Thank you very much. And what is it, seven thirty? What do we got? Two new ones? Should we, should we keep going? You guys want a quick, a quick recess up to you? Nobody's jumping up and down. All right, we'll keep going. Moving into our, oh, wait, we have to seat an alternate and has he been found?
Alyssa, do you see Commissioner Kinkle on the attendees list?
I do not.
No, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll just move ahead the way we are. It worked so far tonight, so we'll keep going. First new item is item number five on tonight's agenda. It is planning item fourteen dash twenty, consideration of a minor site architectural plan review for a twenty eight, thirty eight square foot expansion of an existing commercial building. And I got to dig through my papers here. This is not it. This is it. Is it? It is Emery, I think. Is that correct? Yes, Emery, please.
Okay, so like like you said, we have item fourteen, twenty, consideration of a minor site architectural plan review for construction of a two thousand eight hundred thirty eight square foot addition to an existing seven thousand three hundred and seventy three square foot commercial building located at five, one, five, three, seven, highway six located in the M one mixed use corridor, and it would be the current existing discount tire building.
Okay. Hang on, got a little issue here. There it is. Great, great. Did guess we have all the photos in the thing. Does anybody have questions? No.
Oh, and Marco, I would add that we do have the applicants here. We have Kinetic Design, which is the applicant Emily Horn, and then also the representative from Discount Tire that are on the line for.
Okay, great. So what we'll do then, if I don't see any questions, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and please present your item. You state your name and address for the record.
Sorry about that. I had I had unmoved. So we currently have a a site out here that has some storage containers that have tires in them.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. This is Steve Appel. I'm with Kinetic Design. We're here at twelve sixty Corona Point Court in Corona, California.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So the the plan here was to add an extension to the building twenty three hundred or twenty eight hundred square foot for tire storage on racking. And it resulted in us moving the trash enclosure and transformer. And then we would go ahead and take all those tires that are in those containers, which is a current violation right now, and get those moved into the building.
Okay. Let me see, let me look at that. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a visual on what what you guys are building, but I see it. Got to go through the staff report here. Okay, great. Any any questions to the applicant about the extension of the building? No, we'll see none. I I just, I assume and and the the online version shows a little more, but I assume it's going to be in the same style as you already have, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's just going to be an extension of it. We even have the same exterior features. And then there's some materials photos that I added as well. It's going to show that we're going to match the existing buildings finishes as well. So it's just going to look like a natural piece of the building.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? To the, oh, now I see some hands. Okay. Commissioner Grosskopf, please.
So my question, Commissioner Dem, is actually for staff, so I'll defer to there's another hand, Commissioner Shipperly, and then I'll come back if you don't mind. Is that cool?
Yeah, that's fine.
My question was was more or less for staff as well.
Okay, I actually, I think I think the applicant has completed, so I I think it's fine. If you guys want to ask your questions, go for it. Commissioner Grosskopf?
Perfect. So Emery, thanks so much. My first time meeting you, so nice to have you on board. My question is for code, I know that if it's over ten thousand feet, it comes to the commission and not staff. But this is, this is an addition to something that's already in in existence. So I was just wondering if you could talk through kind of the logic on the staff side, why it's in front of us, just so I understand that. Thanks.
Sure. So code states that ten thousand feet is the threshold and code doesn't explicitly state in this situation, if it goes over ten thousand, it goes P and Z. So there's no allowance for if it was less than ten thousand feet before, just adding it pushes it over to ten thousand. So that's why it's here. Because your result will be a building larger than ten thousand feet.
So I think, um, maybe this is just for note of Jen and I don't know, staff is on there, Gretchen. Whether that is something we want to see with our code revision that, you know, basically this is a natural build out. It's not, so I just as a thought for future ideas around code and whether this should be all, you know, automatically in front of P and Z or more at a staff level. So that that's my comment. Thanks.
Marco.
Thank you. And Commissioner Zipperly?
Yeah, my question, I would just like to clarify, I saw that in the staff report, there were a few building elevations and roof design concerns brought forth by staff and looking at the drawings. I think that those have been corrected, but could staff assure me that the oh, seven, oh, oh, four, oh, oh, nine, oh, E two and oh, nine, oh, E four regarding building elevations and roof design have been addressed by the applicant?
Sure. So technically, since this is a build out and it's less than fifty percent of the original floor area, the sections of seven, forty, ninety explicitly basically requiring the applicant to follow that, don't apply. Now it's in their interest as they would not want to create a nonconforming building. So what they proposed and gave back based off initial comments does meet it, but again, they're not required to do those as a condition of approval. So.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Clarifications. Excellent. Jen, please.
Actually, I think Gretchen was trying to say something, and so I just raised my hand so that Gretchen could talk.
Oh, hi, Gretchen.
Hi, Marco. Thank you. Sorry. And thanks, Jen. This is one of the code revisions that we intend to bring forward. It's a part of the longer list of code revisions because recently you all approved a priority list and this wasn't one of the priorities. So just to let you know that that will carry forward code revision addresses this kind of small addition onto an existing building. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen. Any other questions from us? No, we'll see none. Thank you. Thank you, Emery.
I have one question, sorry.
Oh, Commissioner Shacter, please.
Yeah, just clarification, maybe it's an error on the landscape plan. I thought I understood that there's some deficiencies, but because there are more trees, staff is comfortable, but when I look at the plan and requirements, maybe those columns are reversed, Emery. It says required thirty six, proposed trees thirty. A difference of plus six, is that, it should be a minus six, or or is that just, are they just in numbers in the wrong columns?
No, that's a really good catch. So that is, those should be reversed. So there is thirty six proposed, thirty are required, one hundred eighteen shrubs are proposed, one oh six are, well, excuse me, no, just the trees are incorrect.
Thirty versus thirty six, correct?
Correct, yeah. So thirty six trees were proposed and thirty are required.
And thirty required, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, excellent.
And the other. So another swap, so thirty six to guys.
Are we, are we clear?
Are we clear, Emery?
My internet cut out. I didn't, I didn't hear.
So does mine. They are, they are doing thirty six trees, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, then it's, then it's, then it would be corrected. I'm fine, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. See no more questions. We're going over to public comments. And anybody from the public like to speak up for this, for this, or yeah, comment about this application? Please raise your hand and I I see somebody LG Stilo six. Please.
That must be me.
And who is me?
Me is the next door neighbor over there at Johnson Park.
Okay, do you, would you like to talk about this application?
Well, they are a neighbor.
Please state your name and address for the record before we get going.
My address, five, one, five, I guess it's, what is it, five, one? One, five, one, five, seven, nine, highway six.
And your name too, please.
Anne Luter.
Thank you.
I guess I was under the impression that perhaps that back lot was going to be for sale or something, is it not?
We don't know. Just finish, finish your comments and then we'll we'll have the applicant address.
Yeah, I just wanted to, we were invited as neighbors. That's the only reason we're attending the meeting and we've waited to see what the, what they were doing there next door, and now we understand they're just building a increasing the size of the building. Is that correct?
That that is correct, yes.
Okay, because we had no prior knowledge of what they were doing, but we were invited as a neighbor.
Okay.
And so it's since it would impact us in some manner or form if it was for sale or there was other changes. That's why we're just commenting. We just didn't know what they were doing. So all they are doing is increasing the size of the building, the main building.
That is correct, yes.
And changing landscape.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, applicant, would you, would you care to respond to that? Oh, go ahead, Bryce.
Bryce Christensen with Kimley Horn, sixteen Kearns Road, Snowmass Village, Colorado. I'm the civil engineer. I I can let the architect speak to it, but for now, yeah, that back lot is is not for selling or part of the project.
Okay. Great. All right, any, anybody else from the public like to speak up or comment on this application? Please raise your hand. And I see none, so we'll close the public portion for planning item fourteen dash twenty. We'll bring it back to the commission. I'm entertaining a motion in planning item fourteen, twenty minor site architectural plan review for construction of a twenty eight, thirty eight square foot addition to an existing seventy three, seventy three square foot building.
Marco, I can make the motion. So I would make a motion to approve action item one of this fourteen, twenty application to, oh, my gosh. Paper is easier. For a site architectural plan review with the findings and conditions on staff reports, page seven and eight.
Excellent. Thank you, Catherine. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this item? I'll see none. I'll call for the question.
Commissioner Dem?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Zipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Shacter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Jen. Thanks to the applicant coming forward. Thank you, Emery for your presentation and I'm going to call for a five minute recess.
Thank you.
Back at five till. All right. Okay. Everybody back? Catherine? Okay, everybody back? Catherine? Okay, welcome back, call to order second half of tonight's planning and zoning commission meeting. And we're moving into well, item five B, which is a location extent review for the city of Glenwood Springs and Gretchen, please.
Good evening commissioners, I am going to share my screen here with you. Oops. Beginning. Okay, all right, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as you indicated, this is a location and extent review and as you all know that this type of review provides an opportunity for you all to review projects that are proposed by public or quasi-public entities. And the reviews are based on applicable policies and goals of the comprehensive plan. As we discussed recently with a previous application, I think it was maybe two months ago, maybe three. There are structural issues at the municipal operations center that require all of the city departments, how is there to move to other locations? And those departments include fleet, parks, operations, electric, streets and the special work action team, which is also known as SWAT. Excuse me. You recently reviewed, like I indicated, a location and extent application for improvements at twenty-two, twenty-two Devera Road for the fleet SWAT and streets departments, this application is for improvements to a portion of the airport property that we know as the boneyard. For many decades, this property has been used for outside city storage. The site is about two-point-six acres and it is currently occupied by a temporary office for the streets and SWAT department, a street sign shop and two temporary storage containers. And
Gretchen, may I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
I, I think Sumner cannot hear us.
Uh-oh, all right, I'm gonna mute myself.
Okay, he's gonna, he's gonna log back in, sorry, let's just hang tight for a second.
All right, I'll wait.
Thank you. Sumner, are you back?
Yep, can you hear me?
We can hear you, I can hear you.
All right, and I, I can see and hear for the moment, thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks Gretchen.
Okay, let's see. Now I'm not able to move my screen, the heck.
You wanna just get rid of it and come back in?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try to do that Marco, so if y'all could bear with me a minute.
Sure.
Okay. Your screen. Okay. All right, are you able to see the image with the boneyard? Okay, um, let me just back up a second, so this application before you is for improvements to a portion of the airport property that is known as the boneyard. And as I said, it's for many decades, it's been used for outside city storage. The site's about two-point-six acres and it is currently occupied by a temporary office for the streets and SWAT department. A street sign shop and two temporary storage containers in addition to the outside material storage and here's a photo of the two temporary buildings that are currently located on the property. So in addition to the these current uses, the city proposes adding structures for the electric and parks department. And for, for their storage needs. The proposal is to expand the area to a total of approximately three-point-three-five acres. By extending the existing fence to the north and that's on your screen, it's to the right. And also to the east, so on, below on your screen. The site will then be divided into two lots and I noted in the staff report that this division is not actually a legal division, but it's actually just a fence that's between the two parcels. The south lot, the one to the left on your screen will be gated and used for outside storage. Much as it is today, and then the northern lot, and I've got a close-up of the improvements proposed there, will contain buildings such as a covered storage building that is open on one side and let's see, that'd be this one. And then a five-bay garage storage here and then a temporary oh, temporary canvas roofed building and it's forty by eighty square feet, it's located down here. And this shows you the two existing storage containers. So in addition to this, eventually the city proposes to construct a twenty-by-twenty-foot concrete pad, which will be used as a clean-out area for the, the city's street sweeper. So as you are familiar with this, the commission considers location and extent review applications based on whether the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan goals as well as other cities' city plans and policies. Whether it's consistent with the general purpose and intent of the municipal code and how well the application minimizes adverse impacts to health, safety and welfare of the surrounding areas and to the city in general. So very briefly, the staff report and project narrative detailed how the proposed construction conforms to several of the comprehensive plan goals and policies and I'm not gonna go through those here. But I just wanted to point out that the construction does conform to the future land use map, which shows that, shows that this area is appropriate for industrial uses such as warehousing and indoor and outdoor storage. Next, regarding consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code. I found that the, it is in general compliance with the zoning district standards for setback building height and allowed land uses. However, I must note that it is not in, it is not comply with the letter of the code for the non-residential design standards and that it, the, many of those structures don't meet the, the three design elements that are required for non-residential projects. Also, the fence that is being extended to the north and east, they propose extending the existing galvanized chain link fence. The code currently does not allow chain link in what we call the front yard. I didn't see this as a particular issue in this area as the property is located on a dead-end road with limited public access and limited use to the property. Also, the code requires an eight-foot wide sidewalk for non-residential projects. The city is not planning on installing a sidewalk at this time. I noted in my staff report that the sidewalk may eventually, or will eventually be installed with the construction of South Bridge, but that is years down the road. And then finally, with regard to landscaping, the code requires twenty percent of the site be landscaped. Now, this is just a small part of a sixty-two acre property that includes the airport. So technically, to meet the letter of the code, it would require over twelve acres of a landscaped area. Currently, the property has, there are sage and other native species that are in and around the property. And I felt that it would be really out of character of this area at the current time to provide a groomed landscaped area. Portions of the property will likely be improved when South Bridge is constructed. So although not in strict compliance with the aspects of the development code. I thought that the project is, is generally consistent with the code's purpose and intent provisions, namely that it protects the property, or sorry, the public health, safety and welfare of the city and it implements the policies and goals that are contained in the comprehensive plan. And the last criteria is minimizing adverse impacts and I didn't feel that there were any negative impacts associated from this particular use because the use is very consistent with what is happening in the surrounding neighborhood, if you wanna call it a neighborhood. So in summary, you have just one action item before you and that's consideration of the look, location and extent review, which includes all the various improvements to the property. And your options are to approve the application, approve it with conditions or deny the application, or you can continue it for additional information. So, staff recommendation is to approve with findings and conditions and the suggested findings, there are three that address the, the general criteria for considering these location and extent applications. And then five conditions that have to deal with the, the improvements themselves, so with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you Gretchen. Excellent. Questions to Gretchen from the commission, please? Commissioner Sipperly.
Thanks for that Gretchen, I have a quick question on the site plan that we're seeing about the existing buildings. Is that triple-wide phase one and double-wide phase one, the temporary offices that we saw in the photograph?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Schacter. Unmute, please?
I apologize.
There you go.
Couple of questions, it looks like, is this related to, looks like there's considerable excavation already going on in the southeast corner of the airport. Is this related to that, or is it some other project we, that is going on, do you know?
Um, I might have Matt answer that question, I am not, I don't think it's related to that Sumner. But I'll have Matt clarify.
Hi Matt. Know what we consider significant excavation. When we brought the two, the triple-wide and the double-wide in, we removed some of the vegetation out front, but part of that was to get the rocks out of there too that we were using for some of the landscaping projects on two rivers and a couple other places, so some of the vegetation along the existing fence adjacent airport road did go away. We did have to run some power through there also to get the buildings up and running. And then there's been a little bit of reworking of the northeast corner where the vehicle storage forty-by-eighty building would be going. But that's because it was kinda undulating in there and we were doing a little bit of site prep in here trying to make this a flatter storage area. So that if this was not approved, we still had some So in addition to this, eventually, um, the city proposes to construct a 20 by 20 foot concrete pad, which will be used as a clean out area for the street, the city's street sweeper. So as you are familiar with this, um, the commission considers location and extent review applications based on whether the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan goals as well as other cities, city plans and policies. Whether it's consistent with the general purpose and intent of the municipal code and how well the application minimizes adverse impacts to health, safety and welfare of the surrounding areas and to the city in general. So very briefly, um, the staff report and project narrative detailed how the proposed construction conforms to several of the comprehensive plan goals and policies, and I'm not going to go through those here. But I just wanted to point out that the construction does conform to the future land use map, which shows that, shows that this area is appropriate for industrial uses such as warehousing and indoor and outdoor storage. Next, regarding consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code. I found that the, it is in general compliance with the zoning district standards for setback building height and allowed land uses. However, I must note that it is not in, it is not comply with the letter of the code for the, um, non-residential design standards and that it, the, many of those structures don't meet the, the three design elements that are required for, um, non-residential projects. Also, um, the fence that is being extended to the north and east, they propose extending the existing, um, galvanized chain link fence. The code currently does not allow chain link in what we call the front yard. Um, I didn't see this as a particular issue in this area as the property is located on a dead end road with limited public access and limited use to the property. Also, uh, the code requires an eight foot wide sidewalk for non-residential projects. The city is not planning on installing a sidewalk at this time. I noted in my staff report that the sidewalk may eventually, or will eventually be installed with the construction of South Bridge, but that is years down the road. And then finally, with regard to landscaping, um, the code requires 20% of the site be landscaped. Now, this is just a small part of a 62 acre property that includes the airport. So technically to the meet the letter of the code, it would require over 12 acres of a landscaped area. Currently, the property had, there are sage and other native species that are in and around the property. And I felt that it would be really out of character of this area at the current time to provide a groomed landscaped, uh, area. Um, portions of the property will likely be improved when South Bridge is constructed. So although not in strict compliance with the aspects of the development code. I thought that the project is, is generally consistent with the code's purpose and intent provisions. Namely, that it protects the property, uh, or sorry, the public health, safety and welfare of the city. And it implements the policies and goals that are contained in the comprehensive plan. And the last criteria is minimizing adverse impacts. And I didn't feel that there were any negative impacts associated from this particular use because, um, the use is very consistent with what is happening in the surrounding neighborhood. If you want to call it a neighborhood. So in summary, um, you have just one action item before you, and that's consideration of the look, location and extent review, which includes all the various, um, improvements to the property. And your options are to approve the application, approve it with conditions or deny the application, or you can continue it for, uh, additional information. So, uh, staff recommendation is to approve with findings and conditions. And the suggested findings, there are three that address the, the general criteria for considering these location and extent applications. And then, uh, five conditions that have to deal with the, um, the improvements themselves. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and, um, answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Gretchen. Excellent. Um, questions to Gretchen from the commission, please. Commissioner Zippoli.
Thanks for that Gretchen. I have a quick question on the site plan that we're seeing about the existing buildings. Uh, is that triple wide phase one and double wide phase one, the temporary offices that we saw in the photograph?
Yes, they are. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Shakti. Unmute, please.
I apologize.
There you go.
Couple of questions. Uh, it looks like, is this related to, looks like there's considerable excavation already going on in the southeast corner of the airport. Is this related to that, or is it some other project we, that is going on? Do you know?
Um, I might have Matt answer that question. I am not, um, I don't think it's related to that, Sumner.
Okay.
But I'll have Matt clarify.
Hey Sumner, it's Matt Langworth.
Hi, Matt.
Know what we consider significant excavation. When we brought the two, the triple wide and the double wide in, um, we removed some of the vegetation out front. But part of that was to get the rocks out of there too, that we were using for some of the landscaping projects on two rivers and a couple of other places. So some of the vegetation along the existing fence adjacent to airport road did go away. Um, we did have to run some power through there also to get the buildings up and running. And then there's been a little bit of reworking of the northeast corner where the vehicle storage 40 by 80 building would be going. Um, but that's because it was kind of undulating in there and we were doing a little bit of site prep in here, trying to make this a flatter storage area, um, so that if this was not approved, we still had some kind of flat area that we could accommodate putting some of the equipment we have, some of the materials we have and some other things going on. So we've been basically just kind of pushing dirt around within this trailer and vehicle parking, we'll call it lot.
Oh, this is, I was concerned that it was, it's not any private work. It's all city, it's all city development.
Yeah, we're basically finagling our way into some flat area within the city of Glenwood Springs to store things.
Got it. And my last question, um, given, given as, as Gretchen referred to the, um, the South Bridge dream and potential repurposing of the airport. Is, is what we're looking at today all considered temporary? Or is it considered permanent regardless of what happens with those two items?
Matt.
To answer that question, if, if you look at, so it'd be, what we're looking at right now is a, is a phase one approach to the city's, uh, breaking apart of the MOC because the MOC basically was eight flat acres of land with 35,000 square feet of building associated with it. We've kind of narrowed ourselves down to a, a parks building, which is an acre. The fleet building, which is like 1.6 acres. And then this area, which is 2.6 acres and in a total building space, we're probably close to 30,000 with this. What you guys saw at 2222 Deveraux Road and the last location and extent, and then the parks building. So we're kind of getting back to what we had. But this is basically phase one, the two double wides are temporary buildings. If we were to make them permanent, we'd have to go back into the building department to come up with some foundation designs for them. They're on basically, uh, jack stands right now. The ice slicer material storage 30 by 60, the five bay shop. If you notice up above them, you'll know that these are temporary kind of canvassy buildings. They'll be, um, tan in nature, so they're earth in color. But they're just temporary buildings because we cannot afford to build permanent structures to actually house fleets, streets, um, electric is out here right now with some of these, uh, storage areas. The vehicle storage 40 by 80 is actually for electric, um, so that we could put the crane, the bucket trucks and those things, which we can't store inside anymore at the MOC that do need to be inside to get out of the weather. So it's just kind of a phase one temporary, but phase two would look at almost exactly the same as this, but it would be permanent buildings, not canvas buildings, um, in the long run.
I guess my, I, what I'm hearing is regardless of what happens out there in the future, both bridge and/or repurposing the airport, this is likely to be a permanent part of the relocation of MOC functions.
I would hope that planning commission and council are okay with that. But yeah, that would be our general intent is this is the new, um, partial location for some of the facilities that we have. Yes.
And my last question.
Significantly north of this.
My last question is, it's somewhat rhetorical, but be for Gretchen and maybe for the whole commission. Are, if we approve this, are we setting ourselves up for an accusation of double standard by waiving some of the city standards regarding fencing and other things that we might not do for a private developer? And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Grosskup.
Hey, thank you. Um, I've been watching this every day as I do my daily run. So I've been watching what the city's doing out there. So Sumner, I think that the excavation you're referring to is, um, next to the storage units on county property and they're pulling out the gravel. So you can see that from me. And not in the city. Um, my question, I don't know Matt or whomever Gretchen, um, I'm curious to know the number of staff just who will be based or out here that. I have no problem with the location. I think Sumner, your double standard question was more concerning to me when we did the Deveraux site because that, that one bothered me more here. I really think there's no adjacent uses that would make sense to, um, acquire those particular items. Uh, but I am curious just to know kind of like the amount of staff. And then the question I also have is the way the design where the fence will be and then the exit. It's like you have to kind of curve and then get on to, um, I guess Midland, right? And it's, it's almost like, I wish it could be a little bit more direct. It's funny for that hook and, you know, I just have seen that not being as efficient for these big trucks. You know, you've got people hauling the water and stuff because they have to make this corner and then they're looking for other traffic, which does exist sometimes. So that was just a comment, could be that you've already kind of clip foreclosed that and we don't want them coming into the residential. So, you know, they do have to go out of Midland. Yeah.
So I can answer the staff question. Um, it kind of varies a little bit, but all the streets and SWATs basically out here. So that's 12 staff members, but parks, stores out here, electric is basically out here every morning picking things up when they're doing projects. They'll be soaring two of their, three of their major vehicles out here. So permanent staff is in the 12 range. Um, staff that comes and visits this site, I mean, that's most everybody that works in the city of Glenwood Springs that works in the field. So parks, fleets, street, um, fleet comes down here, uh, electric comes down here to utilize this facility. It has been that way for quite a while. Now we're just basically basing 12 staff members out at this location. Um, and as for the gate, we kind of were looking at when South Bridge does come in. So there's two things of the gate. It's kind of on a weird angle. I totally agree with you, but there was a reason for it. One, when South Bridge does come in, this little road doesn't really exist anymore. Airport road continues through and has a connection to South Bridge, which is above the hangar building and the mechanics building to the north. This little hook road right here doesn't really do anything in the future with South Bridge. If you look at the design and Terry can probably talk about that a little bit. But we brought in the gate at a slight angle so that we could bring a semi truck in, drive through that gate and he could do a loop X using the existing gate next to the triple wide and kind of drive his way back out again. So instead of trying to make things too perpendicular, we actually drove a semi in here and this is kind of where the gate wanted to be because we get bulk deliveries, we get electric deliveries, we get a lot of large deliveries that are on semis. And that's kind of, this worked really well with a semi to get it in and out of the facility without breaking anything.
Thanks. And then I would just compliment, I've seen, um, you know, good improvements for what you can do on the dirt side of Midland. And it just seems like that's a little more attention going on to that. So that's, that's nice to see. Thank you.
And, and you might be right, uh, Catherine, that the, some of the dirt work that's over there is Gould cleaning up there. Uh, the south side of the mini storage over there where they were processing dirt, but they've been regrading that out to kind of prep it for the next phase of mini storage, which I don't think they know and that's going to happen yet. But there is some dirt work going on and that is county property.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Um, a few things. So I would say to Sumner's comment that I think that there's, it would be a slam dunk if this were presented by a private developer. I mean, the, the architectural features alone would, I think we at all agree would not meet the standard. So I think there will be a double standard here for sure. And, and I wasn't at the meeting when the, um, the Deveraux, um, project came up. But that would be, that was going to be some of my questions about that, on that project. Are there, I guess for, um, Matt or Terry, that are there concern about the road? And, and what, whether that road will be able to handle additional heavy traffic, heavy vehicles over, over time?
You know, um, Matt maintains the road right now and I, um, I do think that, you know, we see Gould coming in and out a fair amount with their, um, their trucks. Um, you know, they do have, um, an operation out there. Um, and like Matt said, you know, we have city staff that visit that regularly. I think the only thing that'll change about the, the traffic load, you know, with this proposal is to have personal cars coming in and out. And I feel like the road structure is probably, um, very capable of handling that. Um, you know, we, we are moving ahead on the South Bridge, um, plan, which will totally reconstruct the road. You know, to a commercial grade standard. And, um, you know, as Matt already said, you know, that the road in front of the Boneyard will be completely realigned. So I think, uh, you know, again, we'll have, um, a lot of capacity in the future.
Thank you.
Before you ask your next question, George, if it's okay.
Yeah, please.
Before the summer is over, it actually may be a benefits to like drag in the steel company out here because we will come in, scrape off the top three or four inches of the road that's not asphalt. And we're going to put millings in. So we're actually going to maintain that road. And we've actually maintained it a little higher level than we probably did before. Because now Gould will be out there, these other uses, the new construction company, us, uh, the airport uses. We're, we're going to do a little bit better on the maintenance of that road out there because we will be adding a little bit more traffic to it. Um, the last time that it was maintained in a good fashion, actually Gould volunteered to do it because he was running the most trucks on it. Um, so he went out and did a layer of millings on it, but we're going to even improve upon that. Uh, it's in the plans for prior to winter time. Sorry to cut in.
Um, and you know, in regards to, you know, it might be a timing issue. Right now, um, you know, having this facility out there is certainly appropriate, it seems. I mean, it's sort of, you know, an industrial area, but as time goes on and, and if there's development, you know, if the airport were to go away and there's residential and mixed development out there, the road goes through to the new bridge. Uh, is there an expectation that this facility will become more permanentized? If that's a word, uh, prior to, or, uh, you know, by the time this is redeveloped in that, in that general neighborhood of town? I know that's a crystal ball question, but, uh.
Well, the one nice thing about everything that we're putting out here right now, George, which may be the three to five year solution, because COVID really hasn't helped us with building anything permanent, is every one of these buildings we have out here is movable. So we have storage containers that are actually putting trusses on, we're making them buildings. We're going to have canvas buildings easily taken down and relocated. And the two, um, buildings that exist there are doubles and triple wides, which are on wheels. So everything that we're putting out here basically could be moved. And I think that gives Terry and Gretchen and Jen and everybody time to figure out what's really going on with the airport. If you don't like these things here, it's not that big a deal. We already own them. And if we needed to relocate them, reshift them on the property, do whatever, I guess, you know, the plan develops into, we could move them. If we built a permanent building out here right now, we're using that crystal ball, I think even more than we would be with this particular situation. And our thought was is when the five bay shop could be built, if it's built in this location, that canvas building would go to the landfill. They need another building up there. So we're trying to buy things and use things that are movable because we don't know what the permanent plan is at this point. This would be nice, but we're not sure. But something that we could reuse in the future, like if the canvas building, if you need new canvas, it's really easy to buy the canvas and that's the cheap portion of the building. The structure itself is great. It could move anywhere. We could sell these buildings. So, you know, we're trying to be as flexible in this conversation as possible, but still operate a city, um, for the next three to five years, maybe longer, maybe shorter, no idea. I don't have that crystal ball, but still be flexible on where things could live in the future if this gets redeveloped.
Um, I certainly appreciate that. Yes, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you guys. Uh, any other questions at this point? No, we'll see none. Thank you. Um, anybody from the public? Like to chime in? And it looks like Greg Rippey is on the phone. Uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning or good, good evening, uh, commissioners. I'm Greg Rippey, 213 Creekside Court, Glenwood Springs.
Thank you.
I'm also the owner of, uh, 61116 Road, which is straight across the street from this proposed development. I have absolutely no problems with, uh, the development as proposed. I think it's a, uh, great use out there in light industrial use. I, I think it's, uh, appropriate for the city, but I, I, I do, uh, request a little bit of clarification. Uh, you know, the previous item that you just voted on, the big O was because of a current code violation of temporary storage that was at the big O. Yet you're asking for, uh, two temporary storage. And I can tell you right now, currently there is four temporary storage units out there, which I don't have an issue with. What I do have an issue with as chairman of the airport commission is we've tried for two years to get the same type of storage, uh, to, uh, help bring in some, uh, helicopter companies that really need a Connex out there and, and we've been denied. And, and so you're in, in your, uh, write-up, you're not asking for a variance from code. Uh, but yet you just called the previous action a code violation. And you're asking to put in temporary storage in there. And I don't know if it's a difference because it's light industrial. And, and I, I support the temporary storage, but I, I, I think, um, the airport users would love to be able to avail themselves of the same ability to put some temporary storage units on the airport. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. Uh, anybody else from the public like to chime in? Please raise your hand. No, I see none. I'll bring it back to a close public portion, bring it back to the commission. Any, uh, any additional questions to, uh, staff, also the applicant in this case?
Oh, yeah, Marco.
Hang on, hang on. Commissioner Zippoli raised her hand first. So please.
Thanks. Um, my question, as I, as I'm a little bit unfamiliar with the future location for South Bridge, is it going to be farther to the left down the airport road from the site plan that we're looking at? It's, it's not going to access through that, that steep hook that is currently the road into the airport. Is that right?
That is correct. Actually it'll cross the runway. So, um, I guess I, if you can, if I could share my screen, I could show you about where the bridge is going to be. Uh, maybe I'll try to share my screen just so everybody's clear.
Um, that question is leading me into, this is going to be the, one of the major entrances to our town. If and when South Bridge is constructed.
Yeah, that's true. Um, so if, can you guys see my screen now?
Yeah.
And can you see that my hand kind of pointing, um, where the bridge is actually going to be? It's going to split the, the property line right here. Um, this is the Holy Cross property. This is the Jackson Ranch. It's intended to, um, come right up this property line and, and, um, you know, join West State Highway 82. And so, um, the most direct route through here is to come under the runway. There will be a tunnel here and, um, the road will connect back in, in this direction. And like Matt said, um, there'll be, um, a reconfiguration of the, this road that comes to the south that, um, that will meet this and kind of come back this, in this direction.
And on this, um, aerial image that we're looking at is the property that we're discussing now south of the airport center road?
Yeah, it's right here. And this is the, the Boneyard site.
So if the new South Bridge is above that, then this property will not really be, uh, featured as, uh, in our entrance to town. You're not really.
That's true. It'll, it'll be a little bit offline. You know, you, um, you, the bridge will be right here. You know, there'll be a tunnel, a significant tunnel here. And then, um, you know, I guess you won't, you won't immediately see this area to the south.
Okay. I'm, I'm asking because I guess my concern is, um, like Sumner, Commissioner Shakti mentioned, this, uh, is sort of setting a precedent that the city need not abide by its own aesthetic laws and rules. If I had the assurance that all of these, um, structures were temporary, for instance, to be, um, changed to a permanent structure with, um, more compliant aesthetic features by the time South Bridge opens, I think I would be much more willing, um, to acknowledge that the city is in, in a dire situation and they need somewhere to go. We don't have time to think about that now. And maybe don't have the money to think about this. But if this is something that's going to go five, 10 years into the future and, uh, be a prominent part of the landscape of South Glenwood, then I, I, I'm, I think I would, uh, vote differently on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Shakti.
Well, I just, um, I don't know, we're just responding to council in, in respect to, um, Mr. Rippey's comment. Well, I just, um, I don't know, we're just responding to council in, in respect to, um, Mr. Rippey's comment. I don't ever, I, that's not something that we have, that's subject for us to review at this time, nor I don't ever recall it being reviewed during my tenure on PNC and just wanted to make note of that as far as I know.
Okay. Then you're talking about the, the comments he made about.
The airport.
Temporary building.
Any request from the airport commission regarding temporary structures, right?
Right, right. Uh, okay. Uh, Jen, please.
So my understanding and Terry probably can speak, uh, with more authority than I can, but we are working toward a joint session with the airport board and, uh, city council later this year and, uh, well, they'll have lots of, uh, things to talk about in terms of, um, different requests related to the airport, um, including the, the, um, requests or, or requests or information related to hangar space and that sort of thing. So, um, and it, it would have to come from city council and then they would go back through the planning process similar to what you're seeing um, tonight rather than a request from the airport board. So, um, I think that's maybe scheduled for August.
That's true, Jen. We haven't been, or we haven't decided on the first or second meeting, but that's what we're aiming for right now. Um,
Hey, excellent. Thank you. Um, hey, Terry, uh, what, what is the approximate timeline for South Bridge?
Um, so until we have full funding, it's still on the hopeful side, but, um, right now we have um, about twenty-five million of the approximately forty-eight that we need. Um, but, um, we're working on full design right now. Um, we are, uh, we've passed our thirty percent design marker with C dot. We're headed towards sixty percent. We're working on, you know, details of the bridge. Um, we're beginning our, um, our, you know, preliminary right away process. Um, so we intend um, to at least have a, a, um, a bid ready set of plans by the middle of, um, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, and then you got to find a little more money and then hopefully it'll happen.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Hey, a quick question for Matt, if I may. Um, the reason most of this stuff you, you guys are putting together is temporary is, is budget constraints, right? We're trying to save money. We got to save money right now.
Yeah, we, we sat down with council and had this conversation about how much it would talk to minimalistically get us out of the MOC. Um, and we've had that conversation with Mr. Boyd over the last three months, but you can imagine is a painful conversation with Mr. Boyd. Um, so we're trying to keep the costs as minimal as humanly possible, but still have operating facilities since we are basically relocate, we've basically relocated out of the MOC. And if you go to the MOC, you'll see that we are basically also stripping the place bare for anything that we can take with us. If it's outdoor temp lean twos, if it's hand railing from the inside, we can use on the new substation. I mean, we are taking everything we can because we don't have a whole lot of money. So we're trying to make use of what we can from what we currently own. Cause raft is going to basically knock the thing down. Um, so we're trying to save money in every location we possibly can.
So i- if you had the budget right now and, and you still had to move out of the MOC and you had the money in the bank, would you build something more permanent?
I think that's kind of a two-part question. If we had more money, we would build more permanent things at Deveraux. And here I'm still a little skeptical of where this, the, the bridge is going and how this is going to redevelop down here and, you know, if the airport went away, this is valuable property, you know, are we going to get moved or pinched down? I, I think that there's the timing question of can we live through the next five years and let Terry try to figure out where to get another twenty-three million dollars? And get the bridge built. And then we have this whole time to work with the public, work with city staff, work with you guys to try to figure out what this really looks like. You know, if you want these buildings a little farther south and rearranged a little differently, we can do that. Um, but yeah, if I had, I guess, if I had millions and millions of dollars, I'd love to build another permanent building someplace and house everybody in one spot, not have to keep shifting people around, but it's just a not, not a reality that we live in right now.
Right. And, and, and I totally understand that. Now, we're just out of curiosity, could some of the stuff that we're trying to house there actually fit on Deveraux? Or, or that's never the idea. You want to keep that separate, different departments, whatever.
So we're trying to break the, the streets and the SWAT and fleet and parks and every, just a part a little bit. Because if we're, the streets department is completely in South Glenwood without South Bridge, if we lose a portion of Midland, we can't get to the streets department. So we're trying to house some things at Deveraux, some things down here. So there'll be some ice slicer at Deveraux and a, and a front end loader and plows, and then some will be down here. Because there's really no way to get to here unless you go all the way around. And I guess you go through Iron Bridge and the golf courses and you come back through the rant. There's really no way to get to here if there's an issue on South Midland. Um, and knowing that South Midland construction is going to take eighteen to twenty months, probably. You know, we're trying to space ourselves out a little bit so that we can store some more things at Deveraux. And if we have too many buildings there right now, we can't store quite as much material wise and equipment wise. So we're, we're kinda, I know it sounds funny, but we're kind of planning for the worst case scenarios in as many ways as we possibly can. And breaking the two, the two locations up and having a little here and a little there really lets us do that.
That makes complete sense, actually. Thank you. Uh, you also raised your hand. Did you want to say something or, uh, answer to something?
Yeah, there's, there's two things. I kinda, I, I appreciate Greg's comments about the storage containers, but the, the main reason we have them is basically structure. We're going to make those, those four storage containers. And I think what Gretchen's point was look like two storage buildings. We're going to put trusses on and we're going to paint them. If we have to, we'll side them, whatever we have to do to make them look like buildings. So that we have cover and we have cover material. Um, so they're, they're being used more as an exterior wall than they are really storage containers. I think there's a little bit of difference between this and just dropping a Connex box in, um, maybe something for Greg to think about and talk to Jen about. And then number two, I think that when South Bridge gets built, if it gets built in configuration, it is right now with the tunnel and everything else, when you come into town in Glenwood Springs, the first thing you're going to see is a brown hanger in a blue mechanics building because they are right in line with that road until you start sweeping up and get on the airport road. So I'm not sure that this area, I know you can't see the site plan in front of you, this area over here where Greg is, where the welding shop is and where the city shops are, they're kind of south and they're hidden away a little bit. I think the first thing you're going to see is some old metal buildings on an airport.
Point. Okay. Commissioner Shacter, please.
I'm just wondering, um, and I'd ask staff and Jen and Matt and, um, some concerns that have been raised, would there be any? Would they, would there be a, any difficulty with approval with a condition that recognizes that this is both based on, um, emergency and temporary conditions? And that the approval would be conditional on the applicant coming back within five years for a review of compliance with the code and the needs at that time?
I'm going to defer to Jen a little bit. Do you have thoughts on that?
I mean, I think you can, if you want to make that a condition to have this be revisited in five years, I think you can do that. I think, um, we don't know what our finan- finances are going to be, uh, this year and, um, hopefully things are better than the worst projections that we've put out there and that we will have a, a quick recovery. But, um, we, we don't know what the, the forecast looks like in terms of how deeply we will have to dig into our reserves and what that looks like to affect twenty twenty-one and beyond. So certainly on the, uh, you know, if you would like to come back to a, you know, have this reviewed again, uh, you know, I, I can see that that that's the case, but I don't, um, I don't know what our finances are going to look like in five years either. Is I guess what I'm trying to say?
No, Jen, what I'm trying to do is, uh, again, recognize that it is temporary and we're in emergency. Number two, address any issues about double standards. And the third one is five years is a pretty significant timeline, and I'm not saying that it has to comply within five years, just that it gets reviewed again. And that would allow whoever's on the board, not me, um, to consider the city circumstances at that time.
Or another location and extent review process?
Yeah. And if it, you know, or with, you know, with, or, and it could be very brief that this one is fine the way it was previously approved or no, they do have to comply with the fencing and architectural, um, standards at the time. I don't know. But just that it does come back up that we haven't just given a blanket approval for the city to, um, have a waiver on conditions we might not let a private developer do. Just thought.
Okay. Good thought. Uh, Commissioner Grosskup.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm not sure when you guys came for the location extent review for Deveraux, but it hasn't been all that long. I don't remember who was at the meeting, but I felt like that one was a much more legitimate conversation about the fencing because it is chain link. I've seen it installed already. And I know we took a couple of the private, uh, applications that were presented on Deveraux and they really had to do landscaping in quite a bit. So I felt heartburn then about the commissions. Um, you know, we had a discussion about it and it just made sense for all the same reasons here. We need to do it. The MOC is is not a safe location. But I submit here that, um, of the time to have done it, it was the last one here, this side of the airport, the adjacent uses, um, I mean, if this was a private applicant, I, I could see us not requiring a sidewalk and a chain link. Um, you know, I saw a bear out there the other day. So it makes sense to me that you got a chain link just for safety, but you know, things like that too. So I, that's what I'm suggesting here. I really, Deveraux, it, it sat with me, but, um, not, not the situation here.
Hey, thank you, Catherine. Uh, any, uh, any additional questions at this point? From the commission? We'll see none. Oh, Matt, please.
Sorry, I, I talked too much. Um, I want to kind of go on that. It, it pains me too to come to you guys with location and extents. I mean, the first time I came to you guys to build a building, we built a beautiful storage building down at the wastewater treatment facility, met all the architectural requirements. It's a great building. You know, and we had the money to do it at that time. And, you know, we're probably going to come back in front of you guys, hopefully this year with an electric building that's going to be along Deveraux or also in our general intent with that one would be to meet aesthetics and requirements. You know, it's just that this particular time, we're basically selling a five million dollar building for a million two, and we're not really getting a whole lot of that. So we can't really spend the money um, on all the things. I mean, I'd love to have architectural, uh, fencing out front of the Deveraux building. I'd like this to be more of a permanent situation, but and I know I'm rambling, but I just, it pains me also. I don't know if that makes you feel any better at all, but it pains me to come to you in front of you and, and ask for these things. I'd rather it just be a, hey, this is wonderful and, and we can afford all this and it looks beautiful, but we're just kind of not there at this moment. So anyhow, that's just my rambling.
It's all good. Totally get it. Thank you, Matt. Commissioner Shaver.
Was, uh, was the location and extent review required when those, um, temporary buildings that are there now put in and was it done?
Uh, due to the timeframes that, uh, the structural engineer kind of gave us to get out of the MOC, we had to start some processes quite quickly. And I wasn't sure how this site was going to kind of honest with you without having a lot of discussions with a lot of departments trying to figure out where the world, we're going to move eight acres of things down to, you know, four acres or so. So those buildings were actually kind of rushed and did pull a permit on them. Um, and we did have them installed, so I apologize, but they did not come through a location and extent.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, if I see no more questions, let's see, we did the public, we did the questions. I guess I'll bring you back to the commission for a motion, entertaining a motion and uh, where are we? Planning item thirty twenty, location extent review, City Glenwood Springs, eight eleven Airport Road. With findings and conditions on page six.
Come on, somebody.
Was I amute? Did you guys hear me? Entertaining motion?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Oh, George.
Oh, go George, go.
George, please.
Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, item thirty dash twenty, location and extent review committee. City of Glenwood Springs, eight eleven Airport Road, um, with findings and conditions on page six of this report with the addition, um, as Sumner Shacter, uh, proposed to, um, review again in, uh, five years' time.
That, that would be a condition, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We have a motion to approve with an added condition.
Second.
And a second. Excellent. Any, uh, any more discussion?
I have a question. So the, the condition that this is a temporary approval for five years, is that what that effectively does?
Well, it's an approval for five years, subject to review no longer than five years from now. It doesn't mean it won't be continued. It's just, it'll be subject to a review at the time. And whether or not the board at that time will require more compliance with our code. So it's not really, it's a, it's a conditional approval, but not a temporary approval. If that makes sense.
So I have a question. It, the, the approval will not automatically expire after five years, right? They just have to come back in five years.
Exactly. I would say that the approval stands in place and unless it's altered during that five-year period, but this, the applicant would, um, come back for review sometime during the five-year period.
Catherine, you look concerned.
Um, I think what Anna just said is that, uh, it's a courtesy to us. So I'm happy to vote for the motion, but I, um, I think it's just inviting a conversation with the city. So that's fine.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Commissioner Zipperly, please.
Yeah, I, I stand by that motion. The only other thing that I would consider or like to bring up for discussion is perhaps the north and west chain link fences should have the wind screen or slats as was mentioned in the staff report. Um, just curious what the rest of the commissioners think about that, adding that as a condition.
For additional screening?
Perhaps only the north and west sides because the south and east aren't, I mean, unless you're looking from Highway eighty-two, they're not very visible.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Shaver.
Well, I, I think the intent is of, of the added condition is we, we can't see into the future and we don't know what's going to happen and how this is all going to redevelop and, um, you know, it, it clearly doesn't meet architectural standards today, but to try to do that doesn't seem to make any sense with our current, current economic, economic climate. And it's just putting, putting a flag in to bring it up for review five years hence where we can have a better vision as to what the current standards are. And I guess, uh, to Commissioner Sipperly's comment, I, we could add that if you want. It just seems like an added expense and I don't know that it's really necessary. But, uh, you know, reviewing it again in the, in the five-year future, you know, maybe it makes better sense then, or the whole thing doesn't make sense. And I guess that would be my, my comments on the, on the whole thing.
Thank you, George. Any other comments? No, we'll see none. I just, um, I'm okay with the way it stands. Uh, I, I know this is temporary. Uh, I know if we had, we were in a different position, um, with more money, we, you know, we built a very nice MOC before. And I'm pretty sure we're going to do it again, even though if it's split up in multiple locations, but, uh, this is what we got to do. But this is what we got to do right now to run this town. So I, I'm totally okay with it, the way it stands. And with that, I'll call for the question.
Commissioner Sipperly.
He asked to approve.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskup.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Matt and Terry. Everybody else? Gretchen? Thanks, guys. That actually concludes our hearings for tonight. And we can move into Commissioner's comments and we'll start with Commissioner Zippelley.
Well, I'll, I'll be excited to see where we're at in five years with the, with the airport. I think some things will become more important between now and then, and some things may become less important. And I, just going back to the Rippey Triumph property. I think this was one of the best examples of how cities and communities and developers can all work together. I think they've come up with a really great design and I'm happy that we could help them do that. And I think this is really a success for our city. So thanks everyone for working so hard on that.
Thank you. Great comments. Thank you very much. Commissioner Schacter.
Well, again, I'd, I'd echo Carolyn's comments and, and give kudos to Terry for pulling this together in such a short period of time with that Bell Rippey property. Thank you. We had a housing commission meeting and I think, again, a joint, a joint workshop is put pretty high on the priority list from that end. And maybe Catherine would echo that. And then the last thing might be of staff. Sounds like we're getting a bombshell from, from our two partnership in West Glenwood. Are we likely to see that in the near future?
So that is a land use item that is likely to come for you. So I would urge you not to speak about it here.
I mean, is it likely to come to us soon? Is that a reasonable question?
We do not have an active application and there is a neighborhood meeting that is required for some pieces of the, what we would anticipate they would submit for.
Very good. And I was asked about it by citizens and I gave them the pat answer that it is not before us and I cannot comment on it as a commissioner.
And that is the correct answer.
Thank you.
That's the correct answer. Thanks, Sumner. Commissioner Grosskup.
Let's see, not too much comments. The one thing I thought I might add is that the proposal tonight, Bell Rippey is basically unlocked because of the city's good work in getting two opportunity zones in this community. And I think that's a similar situation for the development that that's exactly what he's going to be doing. So while those are not, you know, quote unquote affordable by restrictions, these really meet a lot of our needs in our community. And I'm pleased to see, you know, what is kind of basically middle or workforce or just additional opportunities in our community. So I, I'm kind of trying to label them in a way that put that into the space. So thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. And Commissioner Shaver.
Well, I can only sort of echo what was, what I said earlier and what others have said. And kudos to Sumner. I, I gotta admit, I was skeptical of what that outcome would be, but I think it was good foresight. And a lot of credit I think goes to the applicant for listening to the community and, and responding in a very appropriate way. So that's why I was encouraging them to become more a part of our, our, our community. Cause I think it's not typical for developers to respond and, and think the way this one, this one did. I was really excited to see that revised application when I got the packet. You know, an old guy doesn't get too excited very often, but he did this time.
And you do live on a river, so. Nice calm. Excellent. Not much to add and being redundant. But I've said it before, sometimes when you give things a little extra time, and I know for some people it's painful, especially the applicant. You, you 90% of the time get a better product. And I think that's what we received tonight by asking everybody to just be patient. And let's look at it one more time, two more times, 20 more times, whatever they did. I, I think that was great. I think we did it. And mostly they did. I mean, they came back with a fantastic proposal. So other than that, the only thing, housing commission, absolutely. If I have any say in it, we could do it tomorrow. Sooner the better. We still need to do it. I know economic I don't know, economic things have changed, but I, I still think we need to, we need to work on that. Might actually be a great opportunity right now if things are a little calmer to, to look at this a little more in depth. So I, I would highly, I'm a huge proponent of that. We need to, we need to look at housing. And the other thing I would like to bring up again is the seven variance criteria, seven-point variance criteria. Jen's looking at me sideways. I, I would just love to have a discussion over this to see what we should, could, or maybe not do about it. Just, just a workshop, just something to talk about. I, I, I feel like we're being put in an awkward position. I feel like a lot of times those criteria are stretched or, or far-fetched to, to, to meet. And I just think we should just, just look at it. Just have a discussion, couple hours, hour and a half, whatever. Just talk about it, put all our heads together. And, and if it ends up, that's what we need to do, that's what we do, but at least we looked at it. So that's what I'd like to see in the near future with the housing stuff. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jen and see if she has any comments for us tonight.
Well, it's sort of piled up in my head with everything that you just said, but I guess first I will say thank you to Terry and to Matt and to Trent and to everyone who worked really hard on that application. Because it may seem that we are slower. And maybe there are some industries that are, but since last 13 weeks or whatever it's been, we have been working harder and more hours. And I, I averted my eyes for my email for, you know, a little bit of time. I'm sure I have 10 sitting there. Because it's just kind of this onslaught of information. So for us, it, the days are longer. So I would just, you know, heartfelt to, to thank those guys for working so hard on that. And for Terry's help, when we, a couple of years ago, were working on the opportunity zone, we did that application with Ashley Badish, who is one of our grant writers and federal lobbyists. And Terry and I kind of had two days or something to pull together some information for the state. And so that's how that opportunity zone thing happened. So I appreciate Terry as always, being willing to just jump in and, you know, pivot for, you know, every day. And we, speaking of COVID-19 and the current situation, we are planning to do a, the city is planning to do a listening session on Tuesday at 5:30. So we'll be doing the kind of call-in. It's a tele-town hall kind of format, similar to what we did in March. And thank you, Sumner, for being willing to be part of that. And we have a few panelists. You know, we would love to open up to all the panelists, but we have 90 minutes and we are looking to do a series of those. So this is the first one. And would invite you all to, to be there if you'd like to be in the, not a planning commission topic. So I think you're safe in terms of all attending. You know, we could also just notice it as a meeting just for, you know, precaution's sake. If we need to, we probably will be doing that for city council. So we can go ahead and add planning commission to that. But we are, as we're kind of working through kind of the balance of having our economy be open, but then also being safe. I think there's a little bit of give and take there. So we're having this listening session and would of course invite you to participate in that. We've been doing Facebook lives with Garfield County Public Health and we'll be doing one in Spanish tomorrow and one on Friday. I know that's not planning commission kind of conversation, but I thought I would let you know that we are doing that. We have been doing those kind of in partnership with Garfield County Public Health and, and others, including the hospital. So I think that those are all of my updates. I don't know if Gretchen has anything to add.
No, I don't. Thanks.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, guys. So Terry, now all we need is a South Bridge. So jump right in, right?
Working on it every day.
Yeah, you are. Looking forward to that one. So anyway, thanks, everyone. Have a good night. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.